Get started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's planning board meeting Tuesday, December 14th, 2021 at 6:00 PM, beginning at 6:00 PM via Zoom. If you found us, you know how to access this meeting via the agenda. On the agenda, there's also instructions on how to comment during the meeting. And as we customarily do, we'll put into the chat the staff phone number and email address. If you are having any problems with the functionality of raising your hand or asking a question in the chat, you can try those other features to be in contact during the public portion of the meeting. As we get underway this evening, we are waiting for one of our members to log in. But um, once he, uh, once he's able to log in, we'll note his attendance. But in the meantime, I'm just going to take a roll call. Attendance, member Crowha.
Yeah.
Member McCallum.
Here.
Member Kent.
Here.
Member Connolly.
Yeah.
And member Grove, we are waiting for, and Chair Joyce is here. With that, our first public hearing begins at 6:15. So we have a couple moments to pick up some items in the old slash new business portion of our agenda. And I think perhaps we could, let's see. What would be something that we could take while we're waiting for Member Grove to log in?
Um, if we could take the A and R first, Madam Chair, I believe Attorney Johnson has another meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yep, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so we will look at the approval not required A and R plan for 335 Middle Street for Daniel F. and Claire M. Riley as the applicant. And Attorney Johnson is here this evening on behalf of the applicant. So I'll turn the floor over to him just to introduce the project. And then we can open it up to members for questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the members of the board. For the record, my name is Carl Jones. I represent the applicant's plan and the right Dan Riley of 335 Middle Street. The Riley's have owned the single lot zone residence fee that currently contains eighty-five thousand three hundred seventy-eight square feet since nineteen eighty-eight. The A and R plan creates two lots. The first or one, 335 Middle Street improved with a well-preserved antique colonial cape constructed in eighteen twenty-four that meets frontage and all dimension density requirements of the bylaw. The second lot is a back lot that will contain fifty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-two square feet that is a non-buildable lot so designated on the plan due to the lack of frontage. Dan and Claire Riley retiring from their medical practice and plan to sell the house in the future, near future. They want to preserve the back lot that purchases do not want to purchase both plots. The A and R plan is ministerial in nature and meets the requirements in Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one P. Staff report prepared by Kenneth Kirkland aptly describes the property and so recommends the endorsement of the plan to enable recording. With me this evening, I believe, is Rick Smith, who is Director of Land Surveying for Mackenzie Engineering Group. If the board has any questions concerning this plan.
Great, thank you very much. We do have a staff report from Mr. Kirkland. I don't know if there's anything you would like to add with regards to that. Or just, it looked like it was pretty straightforward. But if you had anything to add before I opened up to the board for their questions.
I have nothing to add. No, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Member Crowha, do you have any comments or questions on this application?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Member McCallum, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions, thank you.
Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, Attorney Johnson, could you just run over again why they're doing this? They want to keep the back from, they can't develop it anyway, right?
Well, they can't develop it at this time. If you look at the report and if Ken would put up the A and R plan, it's kind of a unique parcel in that the front portion, the thirty-five thousand square feet is at one grade level roughly. And it drops back precipit, you know, it dropped back quite a bit to the back lot. The back lot dead ends, if you look at it on Chestnut Avenue and that it had been for a number of years, we'd be looking, waiting for the board to adopt the open space residential zoning ordinance, which did not come about. But you can see that the beginning of the property is at elevation one thirty-two and in the rear, it's quite a bit less ninety-seven. So it's, although it's gradual, it does, the remaining land is still open now. So that's the reason why. And from a marketing standpoint, they would like to deserve the real lot in the event that it was become developable. But they are retiring, as I said, moving to a home they own in Maine. And oftentimes, people don't, you know, the lot at thirty-two thousand square feet is more than double. The residence fee standard and meets all the requirements and it is more usable land than the back portion.
Okay, thank you.
Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
I don't have any further comments or questions. I think we need to make a motion on this application. And I don't see Member Grove here yet. So I believe we would have all members currently present voting. Member Conley, you would vote on this matter. So I guess with that, Chair can entertain a motion on the approval not required for 335 Middle Street.
Motion to endorse plan as approval not required.
Prove approval not required. We have a motion by Member Crowha. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McCallum. We'll do a roll call vote. Member Crowa.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Connolly.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Um, all right. Are we still waiting on Member Grove? Is there another item we should, we can take up?
Madam Chair, I see Member Grove on as an attendee. Let me just elevate him. He's all set, Madam Chair.
All right, great. We're gonna let him get logged on here.
Member Grove, you're all set. If you just have to cue your video and audio. No video and audio. Well, we have a couple of minutes.
He's on, he's on the phone with me right now. That's the, that's the issue. He said he had to log in under something different and he doesn't have the capacity for microphone or video at the moment. Period. Yeah, period.
Madam Chair, if he, if he can't access the Zoom via the internet or the phone, then he's, he can't participate in the meeting. So if he wants to dial in, he can try to dial in and he'll have just audio.
Just a point of clarification, can he, he would participate as a member if he were to call in? Or he would be? Yeah. Once, once we can have the audio and microphone from him, he would be able to participate. That's what we're waiting for.
Um, the dial-in, just kind of looking at the thing here, the people that have dialed in, oops.
We have a new dial-in number on the screen.
Yeah, is that, is that him? I'm not sure who the dial-in number is.
I think, I think the dial-in is the one that he said he used.
So what is he doing, Ken? Is he joining us or not?
He was trying, he said, this is the dial, he's gonna try the dial-in number again, I guess.
Okay.
And while I was on the phone with him, I missed somebody else. Looked like a Clifford something. Hold on, call back.
All right, once we get this sorted out, we'll jump into the first public hearing. So just another moment here to see if we can get Member Grove logged in.
I don't see any new people that are on, so. Want to do the as-built, Madam Chair? We have five members here, so.
Uh, yeah, that'd be great.
Do, just to keep things moving.
Yeah.
Um, okay, first I want to apologize. I made a mistake on the agenda. It's supposed to be Black Creek Group, not Black Greek Boop. But this is a double request. It's both for the major modification that the planning board did to stop and shops Plaza when they added the gym and we issued the special permit and they did some minor revisions to the site. And dumpsters in particular, upgraded the landscaping and did some reserved parking as well. And then this as-built approval is also for the Extreme Nutrition. Planning Board Decision twenty-one thirteen, which is the shake bar that has opened. So staff went through both sets of decisions. We do have an as-built plan. I was out there yesterday visiting the site, just making sure everything looked good. And they're ready for as-built approval. We are holding as-built charity on decision, the major modification of a decision eighty-nine seventeen of three thousand dollars, which can be returned. And then, as you can see in the staff report, I've detailed the conditions that need to be survived out of each of those. When you are ready for motion, Madam Chair, those can be cited as the surviving conditions. And then obviously available for any questions the board may have.
Great, thank you. Member Crowa, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't. No, thank you.
Uh, Member McCallum, any comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you. The director just mentioned it, but since we have so many new members, it, some of these improvements have been going on now for several years. And I was glad to hear that the director was out there. So just to confirm, I mean, we've gone through a couple of different iterations. They were supposed to do a number of things, landscaping. I know we had an issue with Town Fair Tire having excess trucks or material in the back and so on and so forth. So, so you feel that they've brought everything up for the last couple of years' worth of, of reports and requests.
Yes, at this time, I'm a McCallum. They have, just a couple of weeks ago, you know, we go over there or if I'm in that area, I kind of circle through. Mike Moran, who's a representative from the ownership, has been very responsive. Connor was working with him recently, you know, to, you're not getting as-built approval until everything is taken care of. They're actually in the process of transferring the ownership of the property. And Connor made a good suggestion that we should reach out to them very early on to make it very clear what the expectations are from the town of Braintree in regards to the dumpsters and keeping the site looking well. But everyone's got all their stuff cleaned up. They actually put in additional enclosures and made some that were existing a little bit larger. So everybody's got plenty of room. They're all fenced in. They have the black vinyl and it looks really good. I was out there yesterday and I had gone back out there today. I don't know if any of the board members of the public have had a chance to visit the Extreme Nutrition yet. It's a small local business. They're located in the plaza. And I've been going over there quite a bit to support them. It's a very nice addition to the plaza. And of course, while I'm there, I'm, you know, doing my job as well. So very happy with, with the work that they've done over there. They have some additional tenants that are going to be taking the extra space sort of down the end, past the gym, going towards Town Fair Tire. So the plaza will be fully tenanted. They're putting a My Salon Suite in there, which is kind of a very large, I'd say establishment where individual proprietors can open up their own individual salons and a little suite, which, you know, with the situations we've had recently with, with health and whatnot. And it's probably a very good option for some people, especially if people don't want to be out in salons and things like that. So Paper Store looks great. I mean, it's just really nice. They've, they've made the investment. They've put the time in. They fixed the curb cut. So I have no issues with anything out there. We just want to make sure that, you know, take the picture today because this is the, the expectation going forward.
Okay, that's, that's really good to hear. And of course, all that will be surviving if they, if it is a transaction.
Correct. All the landscaping conditions, dumpsters, you know, the site plan governs. So all that's included on in the as-built conditions as well.
Right, that's perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McCallum. Member Kent, any comments or questions?
I went by there today as well and I thought it was in very good condition. No, no questions.
All right, great. Member Connolly, any comments or questions?
I went by as well and was happy to see the improvements there. And no questions or comments at this time.
All right, great, thank you. Is Member Grove logged on yet? Can he hear us?
I have audio now.
There you go, we can hear you.
Okay.
Were you able to listen to this as well presentation? Do you have any comments or questions on it?
No, ma'am.
All right, great. I don't have any further comments or questions. I agree. I think the plaza has undergone some nice facelift improvements and I think it's looking nice. So thank you for your work. Thank you, staff, for your work on getting this squared away with them. I think with that, we can, we need a motion to approve the as-built correct with the surviving conditions. And the, what do we need to do here?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind, two separate motions. I will issue two separate as-built certificates. I just figured for ease to put it into one report. So you see the two recommendations, those can be formulated into a motion.
Okay, so we will have voting members on this one will be Member Crowha, Member McCallum, Member Kent, Member Grove, and Chair. We, I don't have the staff recommendations in front of me, but Chair will entertain a motion on this application.
Just pulling up the language, so motion to approve as-built on number eighty-nine seventeen with surviving conditions set forth in the staff report dated December fourteenth.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent, roll call vote, Member Crowa.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Chair will entertain a motion on the second item.
Um, excuse me, Madam Chair, can we get a, a motion to release the charity on eighty-nine seventeen as well?
And the motion to release the charity on eighty-nine seventeen.
Uh, we have a motion by Member Crowa, second by Member Grove, roll call vote, Member Crowa.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. And then, and I guess we would need a.
Yeah, so a motion to approve as-built on number twenty-one hyphen thirteen with surviving conditions set forth in staff report dated December fourteenth.
We have a motion, yep, we have a motion by Member Crowa, second by Member Grove, roll call vote, Member Crowa.
Yes.
Member McCallum.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. All right, that takes us to the first public hearing, running just a tad behind schedule, which would have been at six fifteen. New public hearing, Forty Connolly Circle, a grading permit filed twenty-one dash eighteen. Leo Grindel is, or Leon Grindel is our applicant this evening. I don't know who's here on behalf of the applicant. But if we could have either staff or applicant just kind of open this up briefly and then the applicant can kind of jump into what, what this is.
Madam Chair, this is a new hearing, so we need to open up the hearing.
Yep, sorry about that. If we could, staff, please read into the record the public notice.
I was like to add into, I believe that the attendee that has his hand up, David Armstrong, he is, I believe he's the engineer of record for Forty Connolly Circle. I don't know how to promote him, but I, okay. Okay, notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, in the Braintree zoning bylaw, Chapter one thirty-five, Articles five, eleven, and twelve, that a public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom on Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six fifteen PM. In accordance with Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order as amended, said order suspended the provisions of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. This public hearing will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing will be achieved by adequate alternative means that allow the public to follow the proceeding in a communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the internet and telephone. For the record, it shows that there is a to join the meeting webinar link live and also a telephone and webinar ID numbers included. The planning board will consider a grading permit application filed by Leon Grindel to perform grading work associated with disturbing twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-five square feet and improved grass, an improved grass backyard, including a rock retaining wall and landscaping. The applicant's proposal in total requires a hundred and forty cubic yards of fill and altered grades. Property is located at Forty Connolly Circle, contains one point three nine acres, is in the residential B zoning district and is shown on assesses Plan three zero two eight D as plot sixty-six. To review the application, Department of Planning and Community Development in Town Hall at One JFK Memorial Drive on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from eight thirty to four thirty, Tuesday from eight thirty AM to seven PM, and Friday from eight thirty AM to one are on the town's website record to show that there is a link to go to current applications.
Great, thank you very much.
And I do believe that we have, Mr. Armstrong is here as the engineer of record for this. So I will turn it over to him. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you guys all hear me? Yeah, my name's actually Dan Armstrong. I'm not sure why it's showing up as David. I decided to change my name for some reason. But yes, I am here, civil engineer for Leon Grindel. For the record, my name is Dan Armstrong, Strong Civil Design, located at fifty-three Peach Street, Braintree, Massachusetts. This project was brought to my attention back in October. Mr. Grindel had started doing some earthwork in his backyard, unaware of the grading permit requirements. I had actually worked with Mr. Grindel previously in the year as he was getting irrigation well-installed on his property. So I was familiar with this property. I've got, been out to the site a couple of times, looked at the staff report. I've been over it with Ken as well. This plan here basically represents what has been done to date. Well, not, well, well, part of what's been done to date and part of what's proposing to be done. All the landscaping has not been installed yet. Grading work has been done. The slopes that you see towards the rear of the property are as they currently exist. There was a discussion about the stone retaining wall that's kind of along the property between forty-eight and forty Connolly. I've taken a look at that and talked, talked it over with staff as well. The recommendation for that is actually to remove it as a wall and more of a sloped embankment. We can talk about that in more detail if you would like. But basically, we've put all the information in front of you to kind of see where we're at. Back in April, when I was helping him with his irrigation, while I did take some photos of the area, which I provided to staff as well, so they could kind of get an idea of what the difference was between now and at the time when I was there in April before any work had been done. Where I'm showing the best I can of where the old tree limit was. I made some estimates of where the fill really was installed, as well as some areas have been dropped down. From what I can tell from the pictures, from what I remember out on the side in April to what I see out there now, it's more of the case that Mr. Grindel has kind of leveled out his backyard. There wasn't a significant amount of filling in any one spot, as it's a large area and only a hundred and forty cubic yards were brought in. Mainly what was happening is some stones were pushed to the outer edge and then filled in behind it. Again, I'm going to leave it up to you guys to ask some questions and hopefully I can help you answer them as we get through this process.
Great, thank you very much. I will note on this application that we did have quite a bit of correspondence from the abutting neighbor. I don't know if there is, I don't know if they are, if they are here this evening. I will remind everyone that this is a public hearing. So if anybody from the public is here and would like to participate, please notify us via the hand raised chat function. My current view, I can't see that. I think it might be because the screen share is up, but hopefully, oh, there we go.
Madam Chair, I'm monitoring it as well.
Great, thank you so much. All right, let's open it up to some board comments. And we'll watch for public comment and take that as it, as it comes in after we collect just board feedback. Member Crowha, do you have any comments or questions on this application?
Yes, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. So where the retaining, I guess, stones, I'll call them are. You had mentioned that is planned to be turned into a slope. I was going to ask how far from the property line that was. But the other question was, how does that affect the drainage? I also saw the report that there was piping brought in, which looks, it sounds like it was done to redirect drainage in some way. And so really, the questions all come down to the same issue is what's happening with the water? I know that's the property line that's in question with the neighbor who's concerned about the work going on there. And so I wanted to see how the work that's been done has affected prior drainage and then as far as the slope as opposed to possible, like an, an actual stone retaining wall that's set up with drainage, just what the outcome of the different options might be to make sure that the drainage isn't going over to the neighbor's property.
Sure, um, there's a couple, a couple of questions there. So first of all, the piping that was installed, after talking to Mr. Grindel, what happened is they put some piping from the house downspouts back to the rear corner of where he was, he was grading. So it actually takes the runoff that was coming down the side of the house and going actually towards the neighbor property and pushes it further towards the back. So that work actually will help remove or, or redirect some of that runoff more towards the back of the building. In regards to other service runoff, there was a small, that, that picture right there probably shows it the best, right? In regards to other service runoff, there was a small, that picture right there probably shows it the best, right? Where the rock is, that pretty much was the low, and still is like the low point between the two properties, where they were runoff, well, kind of channelized and go back towards the back there, as Ken showed, towards the back there. So, changes to drainage runoff directions and runoff rates, rates from everything I can tell are going to actually probably reduce after we've leveled out the whole area, brought in loom, actually have good grass growing back there, landscaping and so forth, from what was there before. So, the rates probably going to be reduced, the direction of the, so all the roof runoff, instead of going along the grass and towards the neighbor property is going to be actually, pipe actually, back, back towards the back. And then there was recommendations in the staff report to kind of put a more noticeable swell in between the two properties as well, is what we were proposing. The one question he has, how far is that wall from the property line? It is actually set back. I don't have the exact dimensions in front of me, but it's, it's a couple of feet setback onto his property right now. So it's, and most of that rock is, I was out there today, there are basically two to three foot diameter stones stacked on top of each other. I don't think his intent was to really to make a wall, he kind of was just stacking the stones because they were large and only two or three are stacked on top of each other in any place. But there's a lot of voids inside the stone, so I've talked to him today, and I recommend that we kind of pull that out a little bit, you know, put it more of a slope, have them angled back into the property a little bit more, and try to fill in those voids to kind of avoid that, the issue of kind of a, a vertical wall, and kind of get away from a vertical wall, and kind of move it back to a more of a, you know, a steep slope, and not a wall scenario, where it's stacked vertically. So, does that address your questions, or do I need to clarify anything else in particular?
That does address my questions, thanks. I guess the follow-up to that is just, so, the, the thought would be to remove some of the fill that's on top of the rocks, push the rocks back, and it would just look like a hill coming down, basically, is that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to be steep hills, it's not, it's not going to be, you know, a five to one slope, it's probably going to be more of a one to one, or, you know, half, half foot to one slope, because they are large stones. I mean, you said, you put a one, two foot stone up, yeah, put the other one a foot back behind it, you know, it's still going to be, it's going to be fairly safe, but it'll be definitely pushed back, and all the weight's going to be pushed back off of it, so there, you don't kind of have any case of, you know, overtopping or any structural issues regarding that as well, so.
Okay, yeah, I think that's all the questions that I have for, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, great, thank you, member Crowa. Member McComey, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll, I'll just note for the record, as you know, this is a pet peeve of mine. Over the last, all the years I've been on the planning board, applicants who are doing the work without a permit. And as we know, it causes problems and causes issues, and unfortunately, this is just another case of that. So, I bring that up not to embarrass anybody, but just to keep saying that people, please, you know, follow the rules, it's a lot easier, and, you know, makes it much more clear for everybody involved, so, just want to mention that. And I would just ask the engineer, so just picking up on what member Crowa said, have there, was there formal water studies done here, or is this just kind of, you know, your best analysis based on what, what you see? I mean, are we going to, can we factually say that we're going to have an improvement in the drainage here when this work is going to be done?
To the best of my ability to do that, because again, a lot of, some of this work was done before I was aware of what Mr. Grindel was doing. So I don't have exact records of what was out there before. Again, the best I had were some pictures I had from back in April, that I was able to take some inference from. I did do an analysis based off all that information I've done, you know, a look at the, the surrounding soil types and so forth, and yeah, I've, I've looked at the actual drainage calculations, and from what I could deduce from before, I put together a report that summarizes how that is, is basically improved, so. But, I mean, it, I can't, I can't go back in time and reproduce stuff that, you know, has already been disturbed. So it's the, it's the best I can do with, at the current conditions.
Yeah, no, I thank you, sir. Again, that's, that's part of my argument behind doing work before, before it's been permitted, so. I'm, I'll withhold that because the, our chair is an expert on drainage, so. And, no, she is.
Oh, I know she is, I'm, I'm relative of her.
Okay, so we'll let that, and I wasn't able to finish reading the comments from the abutters, but did, did the abutters have any other concern other than they're worried that, you know, the water situation may deteriorate?
I think we do have comments, and I think we do have, is, we do have the abutter, I think, present with us this evening. So momentarily, we'll, we'll take up some commentary from them, so yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Thank you, I didn't, I didn't get a finish, get a chance to finish reading it. That's all I have for right now, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, member McComey. Member Kent, any comments or questions?
Yeah, just looking at the photographs here, so the plan would be to scrape those boulders rocks back a little further away from the lot line, and, and then change the angle, so, and then put soil over that, or put plantings in there to sort of temper the, you know, the visual there, which looks, you know, pretty stark, at least in, in, in the photos that are presented. So, again, how does the, what is, what is the plan going forward with respect to the wall?
Yeah, so, again, I, at the, at this point in time, I'm a little ahead of calling it a wall, because it really wasn't built as a wall, it was stones stacked on top of each other. And, you know, they were vertically stacked on, on top of each other, so, again, my recommendation at this point is to pull those off, put them back at a, at an angle, so they're not vertically stacked, and kind of try to fill, fill in some of those voids that were in there, that, yeah, you can see if you go along the, the, the right side of that stone, and basically just restabilize it back up. That's really what I was looking at this point in time. Changing it with different vegetation is not, at this point in time, it has not been brought to my attention of that as being the intent. I know at the top there, there is the intent of putting a fence, to have a fenced-in backyard in the future, but along the stone itself, I, and i- if you want a little more soil put on top, you could do that, but again, that is, it's still stone, it's going to be, it's going to look like stone rock outcropping in the end. We can mark it up however you want, but I mean, in the end, that's probably what you're, what you're going to see.
Okay, understand.
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to be honest and tell you what I, what I see, and, you know, I don't want to try to lead you down a wrong path, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, member Kent. Member Grove, any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am. I agree with member McComey upon the trying to get ahead of these things, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't request some zoning enforcement of the, the building inspector from the, the time that he verified that they had done this work until the time they submitted the, the application. And if nothing else, I think that, given the fact that we're sort of shooting from the hip on this, we might want to use anything that we collected in that aspect is is sort of a fail-safe, in case anything happens in the neighborhood that needs correcting. Did I make myself clear enough?
Yeah, yeah. And just a point of clarification, this got a stop work order, how was that issued? When was that issued? I think that was in the staff report, but I missed.
It was, yes. They don't have the exact date off the top of my head, but a stop work order was issued, I believe, in response to the abutters, the abutters email to somebody here at staff, and we both went out together to do it, and then I believe a stop work, stop work order was issued prior to us just getting out there, and I do know that it was reinforced on site as well.
I want to say it was around October time, but it could be off on that, too. I don't remember exactly.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, the, when, when the department became aware of the situation, and the stop work order was issued, the applicant, I'm not sure when they contacted Mr. Armstrong, but they immediately started to engage and do, you know, this wasn't something that they ignored that and didn't pursue the permit, so. As far as the building inspector, and typically when we catch somebody doing work, i- if they stop the work and they start with the plans and they get the, you know, this lead time on a surveyor and an engineer, as, as we all know, they, they did work as quickly as they could to in fact get this in. I believe the application was filed.
November eighth.
Yeah, so we did have it, you know, just the scheduling and the timing of hearings, so the application has been in our possession for about two months. So they moved pretty quickly. As far as taking fines and using them for something in the neighborhood, and that isn't something that we can do with money that's collected from, from zoning fines. So, the department has not pursued zoning enforcement on this. Again, the applicant has continually demonstrated that they will work with us. He's here this evening. Mr. Armstrong has provided the plan and continues to work with the department, so. I, I don't think that zoning enforcement is, is necessarily appropriate in this particular situation. If they were blowing us off and not doing what they said they were going to do, but I want to say the plan was, was submitted within, you know, a month and a half or so of that situation, which actually, given the time of year and how busy people are, was, was actually, was actually pretty quick. They had to get a surveyor out there, and then Mr. Armstrong did his thing, so. Just wanted to clarify that for the board, thank you.
Madam Chairman, go, go. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, member Grove, do you want to follow up?
My intent wasn't to be, you know, any sort of retribution towards the, the applicant. It was more the fact that, as member McComey has been saying, we're seeing these like once a month, and we need to get some, some knowledge out there, some general knowledge that people like, you know, you don't apply for permits, you're going to get fined or something. We need to increase the response from the citizens. That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, just from my end, I have seen projects in town come up like this in the past. A lot of it is just homeowners here just don't know this exists. They don't, they don't know grading permits are a thing that you're supposed to do. A lot of times they'll call me up on something else, and I'll, I'll have to inform them that they need a grading permit, because they thought they were just going to be putting in a pool, or putting, or doing this, I'm like, well, no, there's a process you have to go through, you got to get a grading permit, they're not aware of stormwater permits there. There's a lot that, I, I don't know how we, as a town, can make it better, but there's something that we got to get for communication, so, just general homeowners know that there is a process they're supposed to go through, because they just don't.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know if there's anything we can do to the people that are hired to do this work, if we can apply any sort of fines to them. Says if the worker is the, you know, the company started incurring costs that they didn't plan on, that would be a quick turnaround.
All right, I think that's definitely something we can take up, I think, in the aspect of us seeing a couple of these types of after-the-fact grading permits. I think there's a lot of things at play, some of it being just homeowners not realizing it. The grading permit is somewhat unique to the town of Braintree, not a lot of other communities have that requirement, and I think, yeah, I think there's more to be done with public education and getting the word out, and even, you know, to building inspectors looking at plans coming in, a plan doesn't always show, you know, maybe because the homeowner doesn't realize that they have to show it, full landscape improvements and changes in grade, and it's sometimes hard to identify on the onset, so I think we can do a better job monitoring and trying to, trying to, to catch it, but, but yeah, I think it's a multi-aspect, multifaceted point, so. I think your comments are, are well noted, and hopefully, maybe we can work towards making this a little bit clearer for people working in Braintree. Member Grove, if you're all set, I would like to go on to member Connolly, if she has any comments or questions on this application?
Hi, friend.
Okay.
Thank you. I think it would be important to take a look at the retaining wall and how that's going to be treated in greater detail. And I think it would also be helpful to hear from the abutters during this part of the hearing, and it may be that we continue it.
Okay. Great, thank you. Similar in the, similar I think to what some of the other members have said about the retaining wall, I think we need to, you know, it sounds like what's there now may not be what ultimately ends up being there, but we don't really know what that looks like, and so I think we need to spend some more time fine tuning what that is, and hopefully we can get some input. I think, does the, the abutter, is the abutter here this evening, and can we allow them a chance to speak?
They are, yes. I'm going to stop sharing here for just one, I believe they are, there was some in the chat. It is, they are listed as the, in attendee under just William as the last name.
Okay. So, do they unmute them, how does that work?
Madam Chair, I have co-hosting abilities. Both Jacob and Shiny are up on the screen as panelists, and Jacob, I believe you're unmuted, so if you'd like to speak.
Good evening, um, could you all hear me?
We can, and could you just, for the record, just, just provide your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Jacob William. I'm from forty-eight Connolly Circle. So I'm the abutting property to the left of forty Connolly Circle. Yes, so, I've actually, I was the one who brought this whole thing to the attention of, of the, of the department back in, in September. So, we have a, a, a paper trail for, for the entire thing, beginning with my first email. And I had submitted a statement and a memorandum that, I, I don't know if everybody's seen it, or if you, you had a chance to go through the whole thing. So, I don't really want to kind of rehash everything that I've actually spoken about in the statement, and everything that I've said there would, would suffice, I guess. But my concern is the same thing that we're talking about right now in terms of the retaining wall, the historical swell that has to be, I don't know if it's going to be redone, what is already being done, can we undo what, what is there now, and things like that, but I would, I would make it a point to address what Mr. Daniel Armstrong mentioned, the civil engineer, that there is a significant grading as well as, from what it was previously, in terms of a natural swell between both the properties coming down, it was more of an undulating kind of landscape as opposed to the drastic drop-off that we see at, at, at the property line right now. So, that is a big concern for us. So, my point is that, if, if you, if you, I, I'm not sure what photographs and when really Mr. Daniel got involved in this whole project, but we have, we, I, we've loved the backyard for a very, very long time, eleven years now, and I take pictures all the time of my backyard, in all seasons. So, I have plenty of, of pictures that I can dig up, that points to every direction from our own. uh, from our own, um, not just always some, uh, assuming or guesstimating things. It's quite clear if we are well informed to generally see where the grading is now as opposed to what it was. So, um, it, it's, it's, it's easy to see. I mean, I've provided enough information. I could provide more. So there is one photograph I've, I, I like to point to if you have what, what I've submitted. Uh, it's two different photographs. One is that I've just illustrated what it could be from where it is right now. Um, it's about five feet of, um, uh, retaining wall that, that, the, the haphazardly stacked rocks right now. And now if we see, there you go. Um, these are just my scribblings. Um, but that's, that's the five feet measure that I'm talking about. And it extends like that for over fifty feet. So it starts with maybe one rock and then we are going with these rocks. Um, fifty feet of this on the side of my property. So this is a big concern and, and as you can see, I was basically, uh, you know, standing there with my measure and my wife was taking this picture. And we don't, we don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not an engineer and, um, so I wouldn't speak in technical detail, details, but, uh, common sense would tell us many things just observing things for, for a while. And when drastic changes happen like this, um, quickly. So, uh, so what I'm trying to say is this is a very, very, very big concern for us. We can be, uh, I, I don't want to get into, you know, word salads here in terms of pre-construction, what it was, what was not. This is what it is right now. And this is, um, not only unsafe, uh, it's ugly. And, uh, I would just like to ask everybody here to think about this. Um, if someone next to you has done some work at this scale, to this extent, I waited for nearly four, five months and until I saw, a drain pipe sticking out of one of the rocks, observing that coming and facing into my backyard, that was the time all red flags went up for me. And then observing rocks being thrown haphazardly, some rolling over into my yard at the back and everything. So there are many, many details that, that we can talk about. But let's just, let's just look at what we have here. And I feel, uh, what is done is done. I wish we could all just hit an undo button, but we can't. But I think, uh, we should take one slow step at a time to make sure that we are all going to be happily enjoying our backyards, our properties and, uh, with safety and with obviously, um, the aesthetic that you're all looking for in, in the neighborhood. And, and, and I, I'd like to leave it at that because there are, there are many things that we can keep talking about. But I just, uh, I'm, uh, my family is quite upset about this thing. And I don't think anyone here would like somebody coming and doing this next to their property. And they would just say, go ahead. You know, just a little pipe, move it here, just a little drop, move it there, you know? And then in a hurry, getting people on board in terms of engineering. I mean, we've been observing for a very, very long time, for months. Many, many, many trees being pulled out, perfectly normal trees, perfectly fine trees that gave us very good buffer from the elements, sounds. We can now see from our property, we can now see traffic on Union Street. We can hear sounds that we've not heard before. Not everything good. We know that we get big snowdrifts. We know there's howling winds that come across. It's, it's, it is going to be more of that now. And if we see those two pictures, what I saw, one, one that I've illustrated with the rocks and an imaginary fence over that, which I thought would be like solid sided. We are looking at this type of grading. I've been told that they are trying to create a shangri la back there. I'm, I'm just, you know, everybody has a right to enjoy, but nobody has a right to enjoy at somebody else's expense. That's, I can provide you with pictures that is from the current state from ten years ago, five years ago, three years ago, two years ago, last year, last October. That, that picture that you see with that tree in front of my shed, which was taken out. We won't go to get into that detail, but we could if you want to. But that tree was taken out. They are beautiful trees. Lots of trees have been taken out. Trees that have been there for decades. Have been told that if we just put a few pines out there, yeah, it'll take a couple of years. You know, yeah, I may not be here in a couple of years. You see? And that's, that's concerning when somebody does things in a nonchalant. And another thing that I would like to talk about, the point that Mr. Daniel Armstrong made is like, we, we are not just, just some homeowners here. We are all educated people. And the people who have done this work have been in this business for a while. They are not some, you know, who, who, who don't know stuff. The, I mean, let's, let's face it here. I mean, we're all adults. We know the rules. I told the director when I met with, uh, um, uh, the other day, I said, you know, I think twice before changing a light bulb in my house. I may be crazy, but I do because should I get a permit for this? I want to change, ten years ago, when we moved into this house, we wanted to change a lot of things. But we are doing it one thing at a time, over one year, maybe two things like that. The front, you know, calling bell in my house. Okay. Should I get, if I get an electrician, if I, can I do it? I can do it myself. I'm handy enough, but I don't. So please, I would, I would request the board and I would request the planning board, planning department, um, the community development side of things. Um, yes, you know, we, we, we don't want to be, you know, observing everybody with suspicion. That was not my intention. If it was, when the very first big truck rolled in, I would have called somebody. I waited for six months. So please, if you guys need any more help from me, you know where I am. I have a lot of information and let's make this work for everybody. Everybody is entitled to the same treatment. There should be no biases whatsoever. So I yield back and I, I'll, 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 I'll listen in again, please.
Mr. William, thank you very much for your commentary. Um, do we, is there anybody else, um, from the public who would like to speak on behalf of this application? All right. We'll continue to monitor that. Um, so in the, um, in the staff report, there are a couple of, um, pictures, images with, um, it looks like, uh, wooden stakes that are flagged with a, a surveyor man. Are the, what are those indicating? Are those property line markers? What are those?
That is correct. So let me see if I can zoom in properly on this. So the picture on the right, figure five, uh, was taken when we went out on the site. I believe it was last week.
So just to get. Mr. Armstrong, can you confirm that those are property markers?
I'm pretty sure they are because I know they're very close to it. I don't know who put those actual stakes in, but they're right around where the property line is.
Have they been in for a long time? Do you, that to your knowledge?
Yeah, to my knowledge, they've been there for a while. And, and if you're looking at his hand, the, the next property corner actually is back in the, to the left. Now go back to the left, go to left and that stake there. There's actually where the property line goes. And then it goes along the wall, along the stone, down that direction. So there, it does make a change in direction.
Yep, I can, I can tell that from the plan. I was just curious if your, if, um, your client had and had had those stakes installed at some point during their project.
Uh, I'm pretty sure the, uh, surveyor would, uh, put those in when he was, uh, when he went out and redid the survey for us.
Okay.
Uh, it was Chris Kelly that did the survey out there, so.
Okay. Mr. William, did you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I, I, I'd like to chime in, uh, you know. I've been here before Mr. Daniel Armstrong, uh, arrived. So, uh, the surveyor was here three times. The first time was in the very beginning and it was even before all the rocks were moved this side of, to, uh, to, to the next, to, next to my property, when the shed was still there, when the tree was still there. And that was the very first time the surveyor, uh, was doing a survey. And I walked out to find out what was going on. And I was very nonchalantly of, in a friendly manner said, oh, you got to move your shed because the property line is like coming through your shed a bit. So that was the first time. And after that, the surveyor came there one more time. This was, um, after, um, we came to the, uh, we came to the town to, um, in, inform about what's happening. And when the stop work order was done. And I went back out again to talk to the surveyor. And when he was talking, he said, oh, you, oh my God, you know, things have changed a lot, huh? Your, your shed is gone, your, your tree is gone. He, he said this and he continued, and then, uh, immediately a phone call came to him and he, after that, didn't want to talk to me. And then the third time the surveyor came out, uh, I think, I believe it was early November sometime. And this time they came to my property. They were, they were surveying from the tip of some of the trees well into my property. And we were having conversations because I was raking my yard. And he said, yeah, you know, they, this is, I don't know when is this is going to get over because this is, you know, they are worried about the water coming in and things like that. So we, we have to, um, you know, come back again, maybe. I don't know. So three times the surveyors came out, that, and, and that's, yes, that's the stake. That's, that stake you see in front with the, with the red ribbon on it, that was put by the surveyor. And as you can see from the property line, the property line actually cuts in and then cuts back in again. And the other stake you see there is, uh, was put in by Mr. Grindler on the day the stop work order was issued. And that morning, he was putting that in. I don't know for what reason, uh, and, and then the stop work order was, and, uh, I, I guess came into effect.
Okay. So I think a clear designation of the property line, um, if it's marked out there already, um, reidentifying what the, what the, what the markers are. But I think, um, you know, understanding where that property line is, I think is important for both parties as you work through, um, the reconstruction, whatever that's going to entail. Um, does, is the plan to propose a, a, a new, I guess, a new proposal for what is going to be reconstructed, um, is, is where, is, is in the works, which would reflect some different sort of wall, boulder, slope, like I don't know what that's going to be. Um, but is that what, is that, that sounds like what I'm hearing is underway. And I don't want to, I guess, get too caught up talking about something that we don't know exactly what's going on, um, what the plan is.
Yeah, that's basically what it is. We, I've talked, I've gone over with Ken all his comments that he had. And we're, this is probably the, the, the one area that we're, we're focusing mostly on is the swell and the, uh, the stones along that edge there. So, um, again, the plan will be revised to kind of show a little couple more, probably a couple more cross-sections and details of that, uh, to really call it out. Um, it just in response to, to Mr. Williams' comments, he is right that it, you know, the level has been brought over towards his property, but it has not been raised, um, from the highest point that was on Mr. Grindel's property. He kind of, like I said, he leveled it out um, and did bring it over towards his property, but it's not as if he brought and felt to raise it from, uh, what existing grades were back there, kind of. Um, you know, the, the, the high point was just further in towards his property and he kind of leveled it out and then, uh, made the steep drop.
Yeah, um.
And we're going to look to, to try to pull that back a little bit, too, so.
And will you maintain this? Will you be able to maintain a swell on, uh, on your property along that property line with the new work?
Yeah, we, we can, we can draw it up so he can maintain maintenance along, uh, the, the, the bottom side of the wall without going on the adjacent property.
All right, um.
Madam Chair, quickly, I'd just like to make a comment that, um, in redesigning this, just please make sure you focus to some additional sections in the grading ordinance to talk about when you're not doing a wall and you're in proximity to property lines. So just, um, just make sure that any type of revision is, is in compliance with, with the full section of, of the grading, uh, bylaw. And if there's any questions, we're always available.
Yeah, I do have to say that the, the staff has been very good working with me and explaining, you know, pointing out things that we need to work on, too.
Uh, Mr. William, do you still have a, do you, would you still like to ask any questions? I had, see your hand raised.
Uh, y- yeah, I'm, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm still wondering about how, how could it, the, the grading that is so steep is clearly evident. It, we can see it. Uh, what I'm, I, I understand what Mr. Armstrong is talking about. There, uh, there was a high point and the high point is somewhere in the middle of, um, their yard, just like we have a high point on, on that outside of the yard. There is a gradual sloping that comes. So the fill was added to flatten the yard out to the extent that it's now on that, on one side, it's a table. The other side is just natural where, where it was the swell. So, um, I'm not sure wh- wh- what we are talking about in terms of the fill was not added there. There was a, there was enough, enough fill added there. Uh, we can get into numbers, uh, uh, I, I guess, like, you know, you, you, you have more information about that. But I know from observing, from seeing how much fill every day came out. And I know, we know that all these rocks did not come from someplace else. These rocks are from here. These rocks were pulled out. They were broken with hydraulic jackhammers for, for weeks. And then they were, they were pushed aside to make this whatever it is right now. So I'm, 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 you, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that I, I can't speak in, with technical language in terms of engineering, but it's just what I saw and what is there. And if, if we could have a day, uh, for us to visit this place, so we'll know exactly what we're talking about. Because pictures don't really tell everything, what we are seeing right here in front of us. Because you would see, uh, a, a, uh, an immediate, uh, drop off at the point where the first rock is to our property, right? That was not there before. There was a tree there and that tree was taken out without our consent. And, and then you could see there is a, there is a fill there enough to make that place really solid on top. And you can see everything was, is flat there. So I can show you pictures that I have. You don't have, uh, which I could provide you with, um, that their previous yard would start from where the foundation is right now of their, of their, of, of their property. And it would start sloping from there onwards, just like it is in that, uh, Google picture that I, I, I had submitted as part of my, um, uh, photographs. Yes?
Oh, no, go ahead. I think that was just an accidental noise.
Okay, so, so it, it's, it's, it's quite clear there. I mean, uh, it, it's, it's like you're seeing in front that Google picture tells you. And I have other pictures with me and I can dig up even more. I have lots of pictures. So you, you can see from these two pictures that we have on screen right now that one side is flat table with multiple rock standing vertically. And then our yard underneath that. You can see about three feet of that tree that is standing right there and the rocks are, are by, um, uh, clearly on top of, um, uh, the, almost the first half of that tree. um, uh, the, almost the first half of that tree and those, that tree line. So all these things are quite clear and, uh, I, I'm, I'm not so sure why this is such an, um, you know, it's, it's, it's baffling to me that we can't see this. But if, if you do, uh, would like to visit, um, and see, you know, right here, uh, without these pictures, it would make more sense, I feel. I mean, if you just do a walkabout, we know exactly what we're talking about. And trees taken out, uh, now it's even more visible only because, you know, there, there's no, there's no leaves on any of these trees. So with, everything is quite clear.
Yeah, and I, um, not to interrupt you, Mr. William, but I will say, I think you've done a very good job in documenting your observations and in bringing this matter to our attention. Um, and we do want to help work through this, um, so that we can, um, we can help remedy this or at least help, um, figure out a, a solution that can work between both parties. So what it, what we're asking the applicant to do and what the applicant is, uh, what their engineer has talked about doing is providing us with a new plan, which would pull the wall potentially completely out and regrade the area, um, on their property side, um, to hopefully incorporate a swell on their property, um, and then some sort of, uh, raising back to grade. So that would happen on their side. Um, I suggested, um, better marcation of the property line. I don't know if that's something that needs to be redone or just re-flagged on something that's there so that everyone can clearly see where the property line is, um, if they do happen to go out to visit the site. Um, and both parties know where the property line is. And that can also help, um, moving forward, identify which trees we want to make sure are protected as part of any revised work. Um, but we're asking the applicant to fix this and to come up with a better solution. So I think, I think we all, um, hear what you're saying and I hope we can get, you know, I hope we can get this worked out between both parties, um, the, the applicant has some work to do. Um, and I think we're going to be looking to, um, have them revise the information and bring it back to us. I think it would make the most sense to give the applicant some time to do that, um, and continue this, um, to our next meeting, um, if that's all right with board members. Mr. William, is that, that, I know you took your hand down, but I just wanted to make sure you.
Sure, yeah. All right, you know, patience.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, all right, and hopefully, um, you know, hopefully, you know, you can, um, you know, be a part of how that's, how this is all working out, you know, hopefully we can get to a point where we can get a solution that works for, for everyone. So that'll be the goal and the next, uh, so we would be looking to continue this, um, continue this, uh, matter until what, when is the next meeting?
So officially, the next meeting is January 11th, the first meeting of 2022. And so in the, in the recommendation towards the bottom, uh, depending on the engineer's horsepower and capacity to address some of these comments, particularly mind you, when this, uh, report was drafted, I was not aware of the, uh, redesign of the wall that we had spoken about today. Um, so when this was drafted initially, the date would have been to January 11th with a submittal deadline of Monday, December 27th. I did speak with the applicant's engineer earlier and said that, you know, considering what you're recommending now, you might need a little bit of extra time to do that. I'll let him speak to that, but yes, the intent of this was to revise the materials accordingly and in accordance with the commentary above this and continue it to, um, to one of the board's next meeting, next meeting date in the future.
Um, all right, uh.
Uh, Madam Chair, if I could, I would just say that there were a number of issues that, um, of course, when you don't get permission upfront, that certainly this has turned out to be that case. And, um, a lot of issues, different angles to look at things, lots of considerations. I, I would put this over to February at the minimum. That's just my recommendation.
Does the applicant's engineer have any thoughts on that, um, as on behalf of the applicant?
Yeah, I think we can address almost all these comments and give a new plan before the 27th, um, so you'll have the, the information in time. I would, I would like to at least go, you know, I, I don't want to push it out longer if it doesn't need to be. I mean, this has already been going on long enough. Um, if I can get you the information, let's, let's have it on the 11th. Then if, I mean, if it needs to get a, push one more time, that's one thing, but why would we waste a month? When the work can be done in, in a week?
Yeah, all right, um, uh, yeah, I mean, if you're comfortable with the submittal deadlines, um, well, we can, um, put you on the January 11th agenda. Um, I do think the owner has, or the owner and the butter have, you know, they're kind of stuck in, stuck in a, on a pause button on this, and I don't think we want to necessarily miss the spring planting season potentially, so. Let's keep it moving. Uh, Director Santucci Rossi, did you have a comment?
If I may, through the chair, um, just to, um, Mr. Armstrong and to the applicant, I want to make sure that before you submit that plan um, to the department, that you vet it with, um, the director butter and that we don't want to have a meeting, um, where the butter has to continue to object to what is going on there. So if that can be worked out, um, before you submit that plan, um, that would be the preference. Um, if there's an opportunity, um, to meet in the field to discuss that plan, uh, and the butter feels comfortable with a member of the staff there as well, if there's any questions, which is service, sort of a neutral potty, uh, we can arrange for that as well.
All right, so Chair is looking for a motion to continue this until the January 11th, um, meeting.
Motion to continue to January 11th.
Uh, Madam Chair, if you could, um, add a time date to that, just to keep with the, uh, daytime place requirements, I think it's typically always been 6:15 as the beginning of public hearings.
Yeah, and I think this unfortunately kind of ties into a discussion we haven't had this evening about going back to in person, um, but let's, um, all right, let's say, let's say 6:15, um, on the 11th, so Chair will entertain a motion to continue this, uh, matter to our January 11th, 2022 meeting at 6:15.
Motion to continue 2118 to the meeting, January 11th, 2022 at 6:15.
Do we have a second? Second by Member Grove, um, roll call vote, Member Crowe.
Yes.
Member McComme.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. All right, we'll see you guys next month.
Thank you very much.
Um. Did, Member Grove, did you say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh.
Before we left this grouping, I just wanted to put forward a motion to get an opinion from Town Council, whether the contractors have any obligation to comply with the zoning bylaw and, uh, subject to fines if they do work without permits.
That might be, could that be something that could be asked of the town solicitor to weigh in on? I don't know.
Right, that's what I was talking, yes, I'm sorry.
I mean, we can ask the town solicitor for, if we have a question, um.
Yes, that's what I was, if I said town council, I spoke out of turn, I'm sorry.
Uh, Madam Chair, everybody in the town of Braintree is required to follow the zoning bylaws. Uh, it's the building inspector's discretion whether or not he chooses to, um, find somebody or not.
Uh, I understand that, Melissa, but if, uh, if, uh, uh, town solicitor voices an opinion that they, that the contractors are subject to fine, it makes it easier for the, for the planning, uh, the, uh, yeah, Mr. Fosberg to enforce things.
Uh, not sure I follow that.
Well, he, he's not drifting off making decisions on its own. He has some, some, uh, some legal background supporting any action like that. Yeah.
Is that you? Oh. All right.
Yes, ma'am.
No, it, uh, I think that, um, well, it sounds like this is maybe a building department flagging, uh, requirement that might be outside of our, outside of our, outside of our purview, but, um.
If we're having the problems with the permitting, then I don't believe it's outside of our area. If council gives an opinion that these people are subject to enforcement.
Well, I think they are subject to enforcement, it's just not getting flagged.
I would suggest at that point that we try and collect all the contractors in the local area and send out notice. But in term, if you don't do something to try and address the problem, the problem's going to keep continuing.
Okay. I don't really know what we can do as a board. We look at the permits that come through, but we're not in a position to flag stuff. So that is the building department's role, so I guess, you know.
As the planning board, we can request enforcement.
We could. I guess we could. We could possibly, I don't know if we could, as a board, make like a motion to write a letter to the building inspector or something. I don't know what would be, what you would be proposing, but it sounds like.
What I'm proposing first is to find out, to get some legal support from the town solicitor. If this is a viable option.
I mean, it, it sounds like though that we would just be having council tell the building inspector that they have to follow the bylaw, which sounds like that's what they have to do anyway.
Well. They may have to.
I guess, I agree that, I agree that having so many applications come after the fact is something that would, would and should concern us. I just don't know the best way to do that. I think having the discussion in this format can be helpful, but I don't know, like, what the best method is. So maybe it makes sense, like, if you have, like, something specific that we can do, we could do like a motion or something and see if we can, you know, agree to, to, uh, to do that, but I, I'm having a hard time, like, formulating an action plan that would be representative of our authority as the planning board.
Well, and in terms of what we have to do under our authority, we don't have to do anything at this point. We're just trying to get a decision as to the applicability of this proposal.
Whether or not we ask town, town, the town solicitor.
Whether, whether the building inspector has the authority to enforce the zoning bylaw on a contractor if he doesn't have a permit for the work he's doing.
So, okay, so more in realm of finding contractors that are doing work in the town that might be related to grading?
Well, I think you identify those people and put them on notice that they may be subject to fines. And if they, if they're the ones that are going to be hurt by it, they're going to tell anybody that's contacting them that they need a permit. And that should help address the problem.
Does anybody, does anybody else on the board have any thoughts or comments on this?
I, yeah, I don't know if this is possible or not, but I know Beld sends out a newsletter with different updates. I don't know the effect of who takes the time to read those, but possibly adding something in there to make the residents aware of it, um, or potentially a, a press release on the website saying that this is happening. I don't think there's a list of contractors, as far as I know, that perform work in the town where it could be easily, send a letter to them or anything else, it would have to be, there would have to be some other way of figuring that out besides the people who have come before the board and, and clearly know about it now and hopefully are continuing to comply with it going forward. But those are the only two thoughts that I have as far as public awareness. Um, I think, yeah, I don't know procedurally what the aspect is as far as enforcement, the inspector is the enforcement official under the zoning bylaws, but potentially that could be said, uh, uh, voting or discussing sending a letter to the town solicitor or building inspector, just reiterating that this has been coming up after the fact. And, you know, potentially, there could, whether the building inspector has any ideas to try to address it earlier on.
Director Santucci Rossi.
Uh, if I may, through the chair, Russ Forsberg, myself, Connor, and now Ken, I mean, this is, we, Russ catches people, we catch people, Russ finds, you know, witnesses this activity, other building inspectors, um, when we're out as well, uh, one day I followed dirt tracks right into a neighborhood and there was a whole, whole thing going on. So, um, there's different ways that this comes to our attention. Um, if there's some kind of motion on the table, it needs to be clear and it needs to be supported, um, by the board. If there's something, um, that you want me to ask somebody a question, um, as far as directing the building inspector to send letters and stuff like that, that's not within the planning board's purview. I do not, uh, have jurisdiction over the building inspector either. Um, so I, I respectfully request that any motions that are made from the board this evening for action are actions that are within, um, my authority as the director of this, uh, department. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, the motion that was on the table was to contact the solicitor and find out if this was, if the contractors are subject to enforcement under the zoning bylaw, and that's it. I was not trying to get the building inspector to do anything. I think that's a misrepresentation. But that's the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Member Grove to, um, get an opinion, um, from the town solicitor. I just want to see if I am understanding this correctly, to, um, tell us if a contractor doing work would.
Without a permit.
Without would have to get the permit. Did I say that wrong?
Will be subject to fine.
Subject to a fine if they don't pull the permit.
Yeah.
We have a motion by Member Grove, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second by Member Kent, um, we'll do a roll call vote, um. Member Crowe.
Yes.
Member McComme.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Let's, um, I don't think it hurts to ask. Um, and Member Connolly does not have to vote, or should we have her vote? Okay.
No, we have five, five full members, um, so I'm asking the town solicitor, um, if the building inspector, um, finds work being done without a permit, uh, is that entity subject to enforcement and fines?
Member Grove, is that your, that's your intention, correct? Member Grove, did you hear Melissa's reading of the, uh, member? Member Grove, did you hear Melissa's reading of the, member, member Grove, have you heard, did you get that? Was that, that was correct of your, your intent, correct? If, member Grove, you're on mute. If you are talking right now, we can't hear you.
The contractor was the person I was specifically trying to find out if they had an obligation.
So if the building inspector finds someone doing work, is the contractor subject to a fine if working without a permit?
Right.
Got it. Alright. That was, that was our only public, the 615 40 Connolly Circle was our only public hearing this evening, correct? So we are back to old new business on the agenda. 100 Commerce Drive, Frito Lay?
Correct, yes. They are, we have two of them here. We have the engineer of record, Marion Diffen, and then also Rocco D'Angelo was the kind of the contractor we hired with to do this, and he had issues last time with trying to join. So he can provide a little bit more context regarding this plan. So I'm gonna hand it over to Marion at this point.
I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen just to walk us through the plans as they stand right now. So the major update from the previous plan was the addition of some truck movements to show that the 50-foot tractor trailers that'll be navigating the site should be able to work in the future. You'll see that they come from the north and kinda have to take a loop around the building in order to back up into the building addition. It, we should probably note that the, the use of the building addition with these tractor trailers isn't proposed for this submission. The tractor trailers will be using the site as part of the forthcoming submission for an additional loading dock and trailer storage. So this is just for the building addition. It's just to demonstrate that, you know, it is possible for the trucks to access the building addition. And then the site plan kinda shows a clear look of that. I did notice on the staff report, which you received just prior to the meeting, that there's a comment about the dimensional regulations. So I just wanted to point out that the dimensional regulations that are provided are including the, the building addition. All these dimensions include the building addition as part of the calculations. I think there might be a slight amount of confusion because I was able to show the the distance between the property line and the building addition for the setback line, but actually there's no perpendicular line that I could show from this side yard setback to the building. So you only get one dimension off of the, the proposed addition and the property line. So I just wanted to clarify on that. And then I also, on the staff report, noticed that there is a mention of an eight-foot grass or paved strip that was added for trailer maneuvering. And I'm wondering, maybe Ken can speak to this, if it, if it's this, the tenuous concrete sidewalk that's shown on the existing condition survey?
So let me, let me share my, if you could unshare that for a moment, I'll jump onto my memo so we can kinda keep this. Keep this, keep this short here. So we had a couple of questions here. So just for the record, as it was described, Marion, you are, you are saying for a fact that this is only for the construction of the for the construction of the loading dock area. This is not for the utilization. So the circulation and the movement shown on that, they're not gonna have trucks, you know, driving over the grass to access this dock structure. Is that correct?
Yeah, so trucks are gonna be loading and unloading. So Rocco actually pointed out a good question. Can the building just be used for storage like internally, not with trucks loading and unloading at the docks, but just like the interior of the building be utilized?
Well, I think as it was described, we, at the statement, we were saying that there was not gonna be any trucks loading from this. I think the, the concern that was mentioned earlier was that there was some internal storage that this was gonna be used for temporarily until the larger modification would be made.
Yeah, so internal storage would be acceptable, just not the trucks loading and unloading.
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't be able to access it. That's the, that's the whole, you know, there's a little bit of a confusion about that. So, Rocco, I know that you're on here. Could you just kinda go over the improvements that were made since the date of the last memo that was here? I do know that the board was familiar with some of the photos that were taken at the earlier memo.
Actually, Ken, would you mind if I walked through the, the rest of the, the plans before we actually go through the site improvement?
Go for it.
I just wanted to clarify that eight-foot strip, just because I happened to notice that on the plans here. But I can just walk through the, the conceptual site plan. One of the concerns that was brought in the previous meeting was just, you know, the usability of the site in the future. It seemed that the board was concerned that, you know, there's a possibility that it could just be kind of a a building addition footing in the middle of nowhere and it couldn't be used, which of course isn't a great use of the site. So I just wanted to show you that we have a conceptual site plan drawn out for the submission that's gonna be following this one for the major modification. This isn't what we're proposing with this minor modification. Just wanted to show you that, you know, the site can be used appropriately and the building addition can be accessed by the trucks that, that they're proposing with their, their new fleet. So in the documents that we submitted, we included the, the conceptual plan for a major modification. And I also just wanted to point out that we've begun engineering design for this major modification. There's been soil evaluations on site. There's been wetland flagging, and we've just started the stormwater design. So we're anticipating that this should be, the major modification should be submitted in the first couple of months of 2022. So just wanted you all to know that this is in the works and it's not gonna be, you know, kinda kicked to the curb. So yeah, if, Rocco, if you could speak to the site improvement, I also have the, the photos that you sent to me if that's helpful, or if you'd rather, Ken, just put up, you know, the staff report. If you have a preference.
Well, that would help if we put the staff report and I'll go through them one by one.
Sure.
So, first thing on the staff report shows the overgrown trees come through the fence and the gate unable to shut. We're in the process of cleaning it, but we came in some difficulty due to the extreme grade change on the other side of the fence. So we have to find some specialty equipment. That is one of the things that we are taking care of, just haven't got to it yet. So if you notice, we have begun, all the street sweeping has been done. I hired a company to police the whole tire site, pick up all trash and rubble, hand sweep and hand blow areas that the sweep, the mechanical sweeper couldn't get to. We also signed a contract, which I believe Ken has a copy of, or Marion could put up, that shows that we hired the company to sweep every eight weeks, weather permitting. Also, we went around and we repaired any damaged manholes that were mentioned on the original staff report. We vacuumed all of the drainage on our property. We also took care of, there is one major municipality stormwater drainage that is in our parking lot that we were cited for, but it's actually owned by the town, but my client agreed to repair it while we were out there. So in speaking with Ken and the town engineer, we had Chris come out. He agreed that we could repair it. So I believe that is all taken care of now. The curbing can't get to until weather changes, but we, we put around straw waddle to prevent any sediment from getting into the parking lots. I believe that is the extent of what we've done so far. Marion, is there anything in the pictures that I didn't mention?
Um, one second.
So to answer the one that's on the screen, we had a truck come in. Some of that fill there was dropped off because we were gonna fill some areas that had depressions in them and do repairs, but weather caught up on us. So when the truck was leaving, he blew two tires. They needed to dump it on site temporarily. As you can see, it was covered and it's in a downward facing elevation so that none of that sediment could leave the grass area. But that will be removed in the next week or so.
Yeah, Rocco, after the pictures, I mean, I have additional site pictures that we submitted to Ken, kinda showing some of the work. I don't know if you'd like me to share some of those pictures or you're good with, just the ones that were in the report?
I think it would be helpful.
Sure. So you can kinda see some of the, the straw waddling that's been placed around the curb, sort of as a temporary replacement. Street sweeping truck. One of the catch basins being replaced. More of that straw waddling around from the curbs and the sediments that are getting swept up. And I think there is some ADA restriping on site as well, which I'm not sure Rocco mentioned. And yeah, some more manholes that were replaced on site.
With the handicap sign, the spot is being accessible. The only thing that is not me ADA right now is the signage. I ordered new signage. It's supposed to be being delivered next week and I'll have the new signage up as soon as it comes in.
And actually, I do wanna talk again about that the grass strip, just because I just wanna make sure that we know where exactly you, you're all talking about. Let me share my screen. It seems like this is a grass strip that, or the, the paved strip that Ken was talking about. Is that right, Ken? Okay, I think there might have been a little bit of confusion with that, and I think this is what's shown on the plan here as the tenuous concrete sidewalk. I saw that in a previous minor modification from 2008, that, that the tenuous area was already called out. So I think if that, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's been previously approved and shown as part of the site conditions, does that mean that that the tenuous area is, you know, congruent with the site? Is that alright?
It's probably just a misreading on my part.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear. So with that, so that pavement would be accessible then, just because it's already been approved?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's helpful. Alright, so I think that was mostly what we had to share with you all. I know there are still some concerns about the storage containers located on site. And I think Rocco had some solutions for moving those or getting them taxed, but maybe Rocco wants to share.
Yes. The one that's in the setback now between the fence and the building, I have a chance to have it removed in the next week or so. I just wanted to get the board's feeling on what they would rather see. I could have it moved to the opposite side and then go ahead and if my client decides to keep it there long-term, meet with the tax assessor so they can assess it properly and add it to the tax bill. So I would just look for some guidance from the board.
Which dump, we're talking about a dumpster?
No, not a dumpster, a storage container. I can share my screen. There's a storage container. I thought it was just a shadow from the building, but it turns out that there's a storage container on the side of the, the building there. And then another one here, I believe.
But we don't have a plan showing a proposed location?
No, that's, that's, I think what Rocco was speaking to, that he just wanted some, some board guidance on what they'd like him to do with it, whether it needs to be removed from the site entirely, or just relocated on the site, or if it could just be, you know, moved to a separate part of the site that taxed.
So, through the chair, if I may. So at the earlier meeting, we had talked about that. There are situations in a lot of, you know, heavier commercial and industrial areas where some of these, you know, temporary, air quotes, trailers get put on the ground and then they, they never move after that. So there is, there is one on the southern end, and then there's also one within the setback on the western end of the building, along with the two trucks that are there. There's also some various debris on the southern end in that little, that darker square in the corner. So some of the cleanup in that area also is what needs to be addressed as part of this. So to kinda just recap everything, some of the issues have been addressed. I do say there has been a good faith effort to address some of these things with the, you know, with weather permitting. You know, the response time has been, has been relatively fast and, and well done and well documented. Some of the pictures are quite large and difficult to transfer, I do like two or three different times. So, but some of the larger main issues that we have is simply the, you know, it's unclear on the plan whether or not that, you know, your, your zoning block, so to speak, or your dimensional regulations, whether or not those are, you know, whether or not the proposed loading dock addition is included in those numbers. And typically you always have your three, you know, your three columns, so to speak. You've got your minimum required, your what's existing now without the proposed addition, and then what you have proposed for the future, for the future with the addition. And you would need to show, you know, you would need to show that on the plan. And also just clarify on the plan itself that there's no, you know, this modification that's being asked for is not, you know, people will not be driving over the grass to access this, but this is merely for the construction and that utilization would be taken into account at the later major, major modification. You know, with the calculations being shown, similar update of the dimensional regulate zoning block table, all of that type of pertinent information.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please, Director Santucci Rossi.
May I ask a question to the engineer? Ms. Diffen, have you further analyzed that the, the plan that you have, I guess we'll, we'll call it phase two for all of that pavement? When you add all that additional pavement, are you still in compliance with the coverage requirements?
Sorry, for the conceptual plan?
Um, I'm not sure exactly the title.
I believe it is called Concept Plan O1 in the set.
Yes, that's, that's going to be part of a separate submission entirely. That's for the major modification. We haven't, we've, all we did was just put something together kinda quickly for the client.
I understand that, but I'm, what I'm asking is where you're asking the board to approve a loading dock and you have a second plan that you wanna come in with that shows all this pavement that's needed to access this dock. Adding that additional pavement, is that in compliance with zoning?
Sure, anything that we submit to the board as part of that submission will be in compliance, yeah.
Okay. I just wanna make sure, like, are we, are we getting ahead of ourselves here? Are we, you know, we don't wanna approve a loading dock that you can't access because you can't add all of, all of that additional pavement. I, you do have some buffer there. It's just, you know, a lot of the materials are somewhat schematic aerials and I just get concerned sometimes with that type of analysis and just making sure that, you know, we have the full picture and that, you know, phase two is something that is, that is going to be something that the board can consider because it is in fact compliant.
Sure, and it might be helpful just to compare, you know, where we're at with just provided with the building addition. We have quite a lot of space left to, to cover. So I believe that we should be, you know, well within the required dimensions for that.
If I could just ask a point of clarification. So before us this evening is just a building addition?
Correct.
One thousand.
Correct.
Square foot building addition. That is not, it's site plan. Sheet two of two.
Correct.
And it doesn't make any reference to loading dock. Is that correct? And is the plan before us, does it have the truck turning movements on it or?
Yes, yes, both on the the existing conditions, the overall site layout that shows, you know, has the aerial. And then also on sheet two with the site layout, they both have the truck turns on them.
And you would be proposing to construct the doors and you'd set up the loading, the loading dock as part of this phase, it just wouldn't, the rest of it wouldn't be constructed?
Correct.
I guess I just have a concern to, it feels, it feels a little unusual to look at this in this way. I I do understand why you're trying to do it, but like even just talking about some of the like. Storage containers where we might want to see those, it's hard for us to 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 give any sort of guidance without that in front of us. Is, is this an existing conditions survey that was prepared as part of this project? Like, is this a full survey?
That was the survey for the developable area. Um, if we need to do a full survey of the entire site as part of the major modification, we're willing to do that.
So is the setback to property line you're showing for the addition, that's a surveyed measurement?
Uh, hang on one second, let me just share my screen. Apologize, one moment. Um, so no, the. The setback, the the this dimension here, I assume is what you're talking about, the ninety seven point five. Um, no, that's not a, that's not a survey dimension because the, we haven't staked out the proposed building addition. Um, it's just part of the the site layout. We have a separate class one survey for the the area that's proposed to be developed. It's not included as part of the submission.
So that's not the proposed setback to the property line?
Um, I'm, I'm slightly confused.
I just, I'm just wondering if that is a dimension verified by a professional land surveyor, a dimension to a property line, that's.
The ninety seven point five.
Yes.
No.
Okay. I mean, we need to know.
Self and then the thirty five rear yard setback were.
Yeah, we would need to have a plan by a land surveyor showing that setback for us.
In the proposed building addition?
Any setback to a property line has to be by a licensed land surveyor. If you had a licensed survey plan that showed setbacks existing. And maybe you overlaid your proposed on top of that, but still any dimension to a property line has to be certified by a licensed land surveyor.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you meant just the thirty five rear yard setback and that that was done by a surveyor, just not these dimensions.
Yeah, those those dimensions to property line, yep.
Oh, Marian, if I can, can you zoom over on that plane? Can you zoom over to survey? Can you zoom over to survey note six, please? So how were we able to perform a survey back in August if you if you were not able, if that number? If that setback you have listed was not actually based off an on the ground survey, then what exactly is survey note six? Because that was an issue that that was an issue that was brought up at the last meeting and that. The aerial had been done previously and you said, no, we had based off of that. So then. The question was you had done all the survey work for the for all of the other work and that this was now updated. So what exactly is survey note six? If the setback for the for the loading dock is not actually based off of a survey. So something here doesn't make sense to me because the note here says that you did a field, that you had conducted a field survey. Which is why this was, which is why this was a, um, which is why this was up here for this tonight.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm I'm a bit confused. I I haven't heard that you have to. To mention something from a proposed building addition to like the the property line has been surveyed, it is correct. Um, the setbacks on the property in general are correct based off of that existing survey. Um, yes, this this line from from the proposed building, but it hasn't actually been staked out yet. Um, so I don't. I suppose, like, I I guess I thought the order of operations would be that you would stake out the building and then dimension. After like the asphalt.
Yeah, no, okay, so this this is an issue that. Survey note six led me to believe that this survey had been completed because of the comment from last meeting. Was that they were out there doing the field survey work because this was a question that had been asked of me. And how, and why the previous or the original rendition of the plan. Uh, the survey question had come up and so survey note six on here leads me to believe. Uh, that a survey had been completed in order so that you could get these. That you would, that these. Measurements are accurate and verified from on the ground.
Do you have, do you have this the survey that you were referencing?
Yeah. Hmm, hang on one second. Um, so this was a completed survey. Um. That's not the one stamped, I don't know, would you like me to pull up the one that's stamped?
No, that's fine. I think some of this information is just not on that other plan, so I think. We would just, I think this should be part of our record, this should be part of our record. Um, and. The technically, I mean, I guess if this, if this drawing is adequately referenced in the documents. Um. I think it's okay to show the addition on top of it, but technically speaking, a land surveyor is the only one that can legally dimension something to a property line, either existing or proposed, so.
Well, I think, Madam Chair, I think through the, through the reaction that I'm having here at the moment is that this, that was the impression of mine is that this was. That that was in fact the basis for the site plan that they have, not the aerial. The aerial being used for, um, you know, contextual purposes, but that the the sheet two. Was based off of this. With everything done out as indicated by note six.
Yes, correct. Yeah, the that's the base file that we use to develop the rest of the site plan. The the existing survey, like this isn't stamped as a survey because for kind of the reasons that you're saying. Um, but that's where we got the the base information for this.
Okay. Um. I think get some feedback from other board members. I don't want to take up all this time. Um, just, member Crow, do you have any comments or questions on this application?
Yeah, I mean, I I agree that it it seems somewhat unusual. I know the conversation at the last meeting. Related to timing for getting the materials or getting the dock itself. What, can you just tell us what the timeframe is on that so we have a an idea of why the, a better idea of why the request is coming now?
Oh, sorry, I am my, everyone in my office is shutting down one second. Um, I'm in the office room. Sorry. Um. Yeah, so we're working on the engineering design for the major modification right now. Um, we're hoping to, um. Wrap up that design, I think in in January was the was the target date. Um, so somewhere between January and February, we'll be submitting the rest of the submission.
Right, but separate from that aspect, what's, when are the materials supposed to be delivered or or what's the? Time for, could you just give us an update on why why this is being proposed before that?
Sure, I think the, I think the concern is that, um, you know, if there is any comments coming back, the the process for the major modification just takes. Um, often takes so much longer than a minor modification. So the concern was that there is like comments or, uh. You know, feedback that we had to address that, um, it might delay getting the materials that the the client was hoping for. Um, so I think that that was the main push for filing them separately.
Okay, so once you got the minor modification. The, your, your client would order the materials and then have them installed during.
Correct.
The major modification process, okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I guess a couple of thoughts that I had is if we are agreeable to doing it as in this minor modification. Is whether there is a possibility of doing a higher bond and having that bond. Some of the conditions related to it deal with timing for filing the major modification and a a condition. Of complete non-use or driving on the grass and that the storage container will be removed or included on the proposal by the submission date. And putting whatever amount of money seems reasonable from that aspect. At risk, for lack of a better way of describing it, if those things aren't taken care of, and I see the director has a thought on that.
Yeah, I just, you know, I I respectfully, Marian, I think your whole idea of doing this separate is creating a bigger problem than a solution. It's raising a lot of questions. Um, your materials in your first round of submission. Um, had a lot of questions as well and respectfully, the site is just not as tight. Um, and they have not complied with, you know, what they were supposed to be complying with for for several, several years. Um, so who was ever strategy this was, I I respectfully, I think it's not really panning out that well. Um, and I think that. Starting to get into, um. Things like bonding, maintenance and things like that, we typically bond physical improvements. Um, I don't want to say that we can't bond those other things. Um, but we typically require money to be posted to ensure that whatever's shown on the plan. Um, if we're in a scenario where, um, they're seeking occupancy, that we bond those as sort of incomplete site improvements. Um, I I just, um, you know, the more and more I sit here and think about this. Um, what if there's issues with the major modification? What if that is not approved? Um, and then we have this, this, this addition that is constructed, that was supposed to be used for loading. Um, that that isn't in fact, it's just very awkward to have. A proposal for a dock without. You know, getting in there and getting out of there approved with it. Um, so it's just a little bit awkward. Um, and frankly, I don't think you're saving much time at all. Um, this discussion that's going back and forth this evening is, in my opinion, starting to become unproductive. Um, I think that, uh, if the board, you know, wants to go forward with a minor modification. Um, that, you know, there's going to need to be substantial conditions, which frankly, those don't really even belong on a minor modification. That's more for a a major modification. A minor modification is something that's very simple and straightforward. And because you've separated the two crucial parts, getting to it as a separate modification and then trying to go forward with this one. Um, it's created a lot of questions. Um, and I really don't, I I'm just still trying to see like how. This is beneficial or how, I mean, you're, the, I was just looking at Ken's report, he doesn't have the draft conditions ready for this evening. Um, and typically, in a major modification scenario, I don't know who who said that takes longer because if everything's in order. Um, this would have all been vetted, uh, would have had one meeting like we did last month, we would have heard from the different members and what they wanted for conditions and it all would have been ready to go. Uh, for the second meeting if everything's tight and in order, so. Um, uh, again, just just trying to understand what we're trying to accomplish here because this is. This is all, this is, this is turning into a a full blown public hearing. Um, and we really, when we do minor modifications, we like to keep it really minor and and really not. The more we start conditioning things, the minor modification is not an advertised hearing. We do do a very short decision that does get filed, but it's not subject to appeal period. So the more we talk about it, the more issues that come up. Um, you know, and and Ken and I had discussed this at length and said, you know, just do it all at once. Um, and for whatever reason, um, you know, that wasn't followed and here we are. And again, I just, um. This level of question and concern from my board members is concerning to me, given the context of of what we have in front of us. I just wanted to kind of lay that out because as I hear the members, all of these things that the members are raising. Are totally legit things, but it, these, these kinds of performance conditions and bonds and things. Those belong in a major modification decision, an actual amendment to this decision that is, that is. Um. Uh, recorded, has an appeal period and all of that type of stuff, so. Just to kind of, I don't know if that added clarity or complicated a little bit more, but. Um, I'll just, I'll, I'll leave that right there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Director. Member McComey, any comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um. I'll just echo what the director just said, you know, I I keep, when I look at, this is one of the strangest things I've seen in my tenure. And it makes me very uncomfortable, quite frankly, because I keep thinking to myself, wh- what am I missing? Am I, are we doing something, you know, it's like a half step before you do the major mod? And, you know, I I certainly don't want to, um. Put us in a corner or have any problems down the road. I think. What you want is the major modification. So I have to tell you personally, I'm very uncomfortable. Um, I'm happy to see that that you've taken care of some of the things which have taken, quite frankly, a number of years to take care of. Um, but I'm glad to see some action there. Um, and just a point of clarification, since the director brought it up. So I saw the lot coverage, Melissa, was seventy five, that's the maximum, right? Seventy five is the maximum. And you're currently at about fifty something. And, uh, you know, I guess we wait and see what you come up with. I I hope it's not seventy four percent. But, you know, it's, I guess it's those types of things. So anyway, just, um, long story short, I'm I'm a little uncomfortable. I like a a number of what things that member Crow had to say to protect ourselves, but, you know, again, I don't see why we need to do that. Um, in 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 a different circumstance. Um, and again, what I would, what I would recommend is you just take care of stuff, you know. We had brought up the storage things. Um, we've seen this before. I wouldn't hesitate on that. Just make a decision and talks to, talk to the tax collector or get rid of them or do whatever, you know, it's those types of things. So anyway, I I agree with the director. I I'm really. Unsure and uncomfortable about this, but anyway, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McComey. Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
No, ma'am.
Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, no, I don't, no.
Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
Not at this time, thank you. Um. You know, I think we could make a motion to, I don't want to, if anybody wants to make a motion on this. Um, but I think we could make a motion to, um. Have the applicant come back with everything as a major modification. Um, if anybody would like to make that motion or another motion, um, but I'll leave that open to the board.
I guess one question that I don't know the answer to, and maybe the planning staff can help, but would this? Be it, I'm not even sure if there's a repetitive petition. Aspect to this that would be, okay, okay.
No, I think we're good. Um, member Crow, that's an excellent question. Um, again, I'm just kind of a witness on this one here, just sort of listening and understanding, um, certain board members and their comments. And you starting to talk about all these, can, you know, once we start talking about heavy conditions and things. I think, um, the suggestion from the chair, uh, is an excellent suggestion. Um, if the board, um. Decides to make that motion and vote on that motion, that's actually within the board's, um, purview. So from time to time in the board, we'll see all different levels of modifications. Um, and there have been instances where the board has said, this is not a minor modification. This is a major modification and they've trumped the staff, which is completely acceptable. Um, and people have pursued that, so. Um, I think regardless of what the board does this evening, whether they withdraw this minor modification. Um, whether the board simply votes that this is not a minor modification and it's major and they'd like to see it all together. Um, I think any of those outcomes are completely acceptable and I do not believe that we are. And I do not believe that we are tasked or we will be faced with a repetitive petition scenario.
And just on timing, it looks like we would be, without draft conditions this evening, we would be looking at possibly hearing this again and at a continued meeting in in January. So, you know, we might still end up in the same timeline as looking at it all together. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion? Anybody have any other questions on the board?
Yeah, just, Chair, I see the applicant has a hand raised. I guess if there's any feedback on the preferred path, that might be good to hear.
Okay. Mr. D'Angelo.
I just want a couple of things. One of them is the access to the building is secondary. That's why we tried doing it in a two-step process. The new delivery model that Frito-Lay has adopted is a little unorthodox, where the product now comes in on cots. And the problem is we have two or three hundred of these. So it's kind of, it was kind of very important, if my client could have got it done first, just to have someplace to put these cots so they're not on the floor. So even if the major modification, we couldn't prove that it worked, we know we could still access, either not access the building at all and use it for storage or just shrink down our major magic, a major modification to just use it as a loading dock, which is like way less than what we were planning to do. So that that was one of the issues because right now it it's kind of really hindering. And I know it's not a matter of the planning board if the company makes money or not, but it kind of, it's really hindering how they load trucks and everything. And it's always congested. So we were trying to free up a little bit of space in front of the existing loading docks. So that was the idea. The idea didn't come from us. The idea came from when I spoke to the building inspector and the planning, like the planning department suggested that if I split it up, I might be able to get a one or two-month jump on getting the building built, which would help my client free up a little bit of real estate inside and make their delivery a little more productive.
And so the construction of the building, I'm still a little confused. As soon as it's built, you want to use it as a loading dock? Or it's going to be built temporarily used as storage until there's a major modification to use it?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's accessible through this proposed overhead door from the rest of the building?
If you did a minor modification to do the building addition and built that, a scenario could exist where that would be just a small building addition and no trucks would back up to it or anything like that?
Correct.
If we could not prove that, we could do it with the town's blessing within a, within the regulations, correct.
So there would be no doors, no trucks would access the doors on that north side?
Doors in, but there'd be no, no way to access them. Like I would frame them in and there would be no way to access them. And quite frankly, all it does is give me the ability to start purchasing material. If I don't put in two or three garage doors and I have to fill those in with walling, it doesn't hurt, but if I have to start the process three months from now ordering material, right now we're seven to, like six to seven months behind in getting structural steel. It's quite frank, I probably won't get this project until next year. I mean, the end of twenty-two. So we were trying to look for any way to speed it up, to give my client something, even if it's not a hundred percent what they want, enough to get by with their loading and unloading of chips until we could either prove it works or we disprove it doesn't work.
And it might just be worth pointing out that, you know, as you, there's been concerns about the the total covered lot coverage. You know, if we wanted to make this a usable loading dock and like really pare down the conceptual plan for the major modification, we could theoretically just put a driveway in leading into the loading dock and then only be a few thousand square feet rather than, you know, all this extra storage space. So there is a scenario that exists where, you know, we pare down some of the impervious coverage if need be.
See now, through the chair, if I may, I think that, you know, that you, then you're just getting, you're just proving everybody else's point of saying that that when you start getting into saying we're going to put in the small access area and everything else, that's getting into major modification territory. And just for the, and just for the record, it was not I who made a suggestion to split, to split between a man, you know, to split up, you know, to split up the project or anything like that. That must have been from the building department because that certainly wasn't me.
Not putting it on you, Ken.
Yeah, I think as, I mean, I I I I hear your concerns and I hear the members' concerns and staff concerns. I mean, this is a bit unusual for us to look at something in this way. So I'll, I'll leave it up to the board to make a, to make a motion on this.
Okay, Madam Chair, hearing silence, I'll make a motion. I I like your idea. I think this should be part of the major modification. I understand the client's needs and all that. But, you know, I just think in its entirety, it could have been better thought out. So I'm going to, I'm going to recommend your proposal, which is we wait until we receive, this is too large, it would change, and we wait to receive the necessary papers on the major modification.
We have a motion by Member McComme. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Member Crowe. On this application, voting members are Member Crowe, Member McComme, Member Kent, Member Grove and myself. Roll call votes on the motion by McComme and second by Member Crowe, Member Crowe.
Yes.
Member McComme.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well.
All right, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Definitely follow up with staff and to to work through the next steps on that.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, I believe, we can do approval of meeting minutes. We had the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes and the October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes. Chair, entertain a motion on either of them separately or or together, if anybody would like to make a motion.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from September fourteenth and October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one as drafted.
We have a motion by Member Crowe. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Grove, roll call vote, Member Crowe.
Yes.
Member McComme.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes as well. All right, we have updated discussions. We have a couple of items in that area. The first one is a master plan update. And I suspect that the director would like to share the update on the master plan because we had some exciting response to our RFP, so feel free to share. Director Santucci-Razi would love to hear it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Very, very pleased and happy to announce that the Town of Braintree received four proposals in response to the RFP solicitation for the Town of Braintree Master Plan. The selection committee has done some initial review and has convened. And we are in the process of scheduling interviews with some of the people who have responded. So we will continue to provide updates. But nonetheless, very excited and we have a lot to be happy about here in Braintree. So I remember Joyce, Chair Joyce is a member of the selection committee as well. I'm not sure if she has anything that she would like to add. Thank you.
Nope, I think it's going to be, I think we have some great people who have, you know, applied to help us with this. So I look forward to seeing, you know, who ends up shaking out as our consultant and working with them. And, you know, it seems like we'll be underway in the beginning of the year to hit the ground running. So, you know, definitely keep an eye out for the startup of community meetings and public participation. We're really targeting that as part of our effort. So look forward to engaging in that discussion with everyone very much, so. So stay tuned. The next item on our agenda is the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw. Just as a reminder, we had looked at a draft version of that at our last meeting and discussed the potential for the planning board to sponsor an inclusionary housing bylaw. We had also had participation by a member of our board, Member Crowe and myself, I was unfortunately unable to to make it, but Member Crowe did meet with Director Santucci-Razi and the mayor's office and and it was the town solicitor, I believe, to kind of talk through some of the details of the bylaw and elements of the bylaw that were of interest to the member and the board also. I think we have a revised bylaw that was shared with the director. We've received a lot of comment from the public with regards to the inclusionary bylaw, which is really good to see a lot of people engaged and looking at diverse housing and housing production and housing development in the Town of Braintree and where we want to be moving forward with that. So I think that's all really good. I think it's tying in nicely to our efforts on the master plan as well. So I think with that, if the director wants to share an update with that and kind of just talk through what's next, I I know it's still, I think, or I think it's still out there as needing a someone to sponsor it or whatever the right word for that is. So just kind of update us on that and then maybe we can talk to some members to, this isn't yet a public hearing. I know we did take in a lot of public comment, but we're not at a point where we would be having a public discussion, but we do ultimately want to end up there. So Director Santucci-Razi, what can you add?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, for sort of laying that out and saving me from having to go over that. So we were able to convene after the last meeting, myself, Member Crowe and our assistant solicitor, we talked about some of the concerns with the proposed draft, at which time I made some revisions to that draft, which was circulated to the planning board and shared this with Mecca Chorus, and I have that back on this evening. Essentially, I will quickly review the revisions that were made. Instead of the straight fifteen percent, we have a sliding scale. And basically, anybody doing six to ten units would be required to do one affordable unit. Anybody doing between eleven and fifty units of housing would be required to do ten percent. And then anybody doing fifty-one or more units would be required to do fifteen percent. We did revise the fraction part of it. The fractions under point five will run, will round down and fractions of point five or greater will round up. When you have an inclusionary ordinance where you have categories that are exceeding ten percent, the rounding isn't as important as it is if you were doing a strict ten. If you did a strict ten and you rounded down in some scenarios, you would be undercutting that ten percent. But where we have the fifteen percent requirement on projects fifty-one units and more, we would be picking up units there in excess of ten percent, therefore, the rationale for the fraction. The other thing that we discussed, the Town of Braintree through the zoning board of appeals has granted several variances for density. Now that we're introducing an inclusionary ordinance, a standard practice in inclusionary ordinances throughout Massachusetts is to provide for a density bonus. There is a section in here that has been added that talks about developments that would like to do twenty-five percent affordability and the density bonuses may be negotiated at the discretion of the planning board. And the reason that we've left it as discretionary is I think we all understand that there's certain parts of town that could handle additional density and that could warrant more development and more affordable units. And frankly and respectfully, there's some areas of town that simply cannot. The planning board is is very versed with the community and very familiar with the different areas of town as the, as is the administration and the staff. And that's the, pretty much the extent of the changes. If you look sort of at the end, I did also include the other changes that were in the the previous draft that we haven't gotten drilled down into detail yet, but that would be splitting up multifamily from two-family. Our ordinance has apartment house slash two-family as a use category. And frankly, that is just something that is, needs to go. Apartment house is not a use category. It's a type of ownership and the fact that it's lumped in together with two families is is just very archaic language. And then removing two families from the highway business and commercial and then removing multifamily from the commercial district. There is a strong desire locally to use our commercial areas for commercial uses and and hopefully some life science uses as we tend, as we begin to embark on four hundred Wood Road, which looks absolutely fabulous for those of you haven't, who haven't seen it. So just some other sort of housekeeping things that will be perfected in any drafts that go forward. We will do a full search of the text to remove apartment house where that might appear somewhere in the bylaw and replace it with multifamily, similar to the language that is in section one thirty-five, which is our multifamily housing section. So the planner and me likes to have the use table match the sections and the sections to match the use table. So any effort minimal, if any, and sort of cleaning that up would be part of this. So that's the extent of the changes. I want to thank those people that did send in comments and for somebody who has been a proponent and somebody who's been advocating for affordable housing in this community since two thousand and five. It's nice to have support from the residents on this initiative when I first introduced this. Almost run out of town was maybe how I would describe the reaction for most people. I won't say publicly some of the other things that were said to me at that time. But regardless, I want to thank any resident who supports inclusionary housing. And I want to thank them for sending in their letters. Those were all circulated and get a chance to respond to every single one. But those were all circulated to the planning board as a packet. So available for any questions or comments. But that pretty much concludes the revisions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Santucci-Razi. I'd just like to open it up to board members. Member Crowe, do you have any comments, questions, anything you would like to add with regards to this?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Joyce. And and I do want to thank the the planning director and the mayor's office staff. It was a productive meeting that we had to talk about the prior revision in November and the updated revision that was presented to us for discussion tonight. And there have been a few things changed in it that I think make it more palatable with the rounding and and the percentages. There's other parts of it that I think is going to a broader discussion. And so I had a couple of points that I wanted to talk about with respect to the request for sponsoring. And the first one being the request itself and what that looks like. And then also the details that the director has gone into also on on what the bylaw would do and and also some additional information on what some of the projects have looked like that have gotten approved without the bylaw. And then the appropriateness of discussing this type of bylaw at this time in connection with the work that's ongoing with the master plan and the discussions that were had in two thousand nineteen about essentially holding off on zoning updates until the master plan was done. So I'd like to start with the sponsorship. The planning board has been asked So I'd like to start with the sponsorship. The planning board has been asked to sponsor the bylaw and the statutory setup and the local bylaw setup for doing an amendment to zoning provides that there is a a a body that initiates a bylaw and the planning board is one of them. Town council could be another one and individual owning land subject to the change. I'm not sure how exactly how that works with the context of this bylaw. But a group of registered voters under circumstances, the planning board or regional planning agency. So if the planning board votes to initiate or sponsor their proposal to move on, it then goes to town council and town council and planning board are charged withholding public hearings on the proposal. And and after that point, the planning board has a recommendation that goes to town council on on what the planning board feels is appropriate or not appropriate about the bylaw. So I just wanted to note that if we vote to sponsor it, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're we're tied to voting to recommend the bylaw when it comes back after public hearing and public comment have come in. And and I appreciate the public comments that have come in in favor of the bylaw. And that sort of brings me to the next point of what does the bylaw, that what's the effect of the bylaw? And so I think that has a couple of components of it. Also, I like my groups of threes. So the the director has gone over what the bylaw says and what it does. And and I'm not going to go into that again. She she went through everything that I had in my notes to talk about. And then what's Braintree been doing? And last, how does that compare to other areas for a purpose of discussion? So the the bylaw was talked about and what would it do? So a couple of projects that have fairly recently gotten approved to talk about the Fraser Street Apartments that are behind Camp and Alley's on Pearl Street, sort of across from Shaw's. So that was approved with variances. There's fifteen apartment units, thirteen one bedroom to two bedrooms, and thirteen percent of those are affordable. So that was a result of negotiation and the approval process. They did obtain a significant variance. The size of the lot would have allowed three units to be built there instead of the fifteen that were ultimately built. And they did thirteen percent affordable. So the Hancock Street project that was more recently approved and and is sort of working its way through financing, as I understand it. Um, that one has thirty age restricted units and those are, I believe they're condo units, and five of those are affordable. So that's about sixteen and a half percent of the units there are affordable. That project was also granted a major variance. The size of the lot would have allowed ten units that are one bedroom or eight units that are two bedroom. And so the variance was granted and the town received in response to negotiation. So that sort of brings me to the next point is that looking at requiring the affordable housing for anyone doing anything. So there there's, there's the density bonus built in for the twenty-five percent, which some concept is is available in the law under what's called the friendly forty B, as much as that sounds like it doesn't make any sense. There is a component where a developer can negotiate with the town on something that makes sense for the town and give twenty-five percent affordable. But my concern is taking a look at the bylaw with the required affordable housing and not giving the density for the other projects that are doing less than twenty-five percent and how that ties into projects that are actually being built. And and how does that make it? What's the effect of that on a person who owns a property, who's deciding what to do with it? Or properties that are bladed or don't look good or underutilized. We recently had a bladed ordinance pass that talks about properties that aren't being utilized. And there's a lot of factors that can go into a property that isn't used the right way. And one of them can be what are the alternatives for using it or redeveloping it? And I think that this is part of that discussion. So the effect of requiring the percentages of affordable housing for a condo unit, uh affordable is based on the median income for a town. So it's not, some people think of affordable as low income and some people think of affordable in different ways, but it can mean a lot of different things. And so in the concept of the safe housing index, it's based on median income. So just using the Hancock Street condos, for example, the market rate for those would probably be somewhere in the fives, maybe sixes. The affordable units, probably high twos, low threes. So that difference in price comes out of what the developer's income is that then affects what the project is that's being proposed. Whether that's cost savings on the exterior, whether that's cost savings on the site improvements. Because the money comes in and the money goes out. And so it's a difference of what did they do and all the units need to look the same under the the affordable housing rules that are out there. And so just as a comparison, I'm going to use Quincy as an example, and I know Quincy is not a good example for Braintree. But for discussion's sake, I'll talk about Motel Six, which is a very visible property. And so that is just over two acres and under our multifamily zoning that's available under bylaws in section seven oh five, that would allow about eighteen one bedroom units or fifteen two bedroom units. And so under this bylaw, there would be, they would fall into the, what is it, the ten percent of it being affordable. And then contrasting it to Quincy, and I didn't, I did this looking at the bylaw and looking at the size of the property. So I'm not a hundred percent sure that this is right, but my reading is that Braintree requires five thousand square feet of land per unit and Quincy requires six hundred square feet of land per unit, which would equate to Quincy allowing a hundred and fifty units on that same size site. And not that anybody in Braintree wants a hundred and fifty units on that size site or or possibly even is open to residential or not residential. Just the contrast and what are other cities doing that have this type of inclusionary mandate and what does that allow? So the, so the last point I want to make, and I apologize for going on so long, is just the appropriateness of this discussion on the topic at this point. So there was an inclusionary component to the comprehensive zoning that was proposed in twenty nineteen. And although it was worked on for a long time, once the public became aware of it, it was quite quickly shut down. And the message was clearly made at that time that the town should be getting a master plan before there's any substantial changes to the zoning bylaw. And here we are two and a half years later, and who would have thought that COVID would have happened during that time? And the budget looks a lot different. The state of what the, you know, what the town is doing, there's vacancies at the mall. There's different aspects to properties and and just the timeframe alone, the two and a half years that has gotten us to this point and now we're closer to the master plan. And we have the proposals and there's momentum there and that's good. And so it's just whether or not we should be having the discussion and understanding that the bylaw that's being proposed isn't necessarily just a way to create affordable housing. Because my, looking at it, I'm looking at what has been built and producing the affordable units for Fraser and and hopefully Hancock Street will be built and produce those affordable units also. This bylaw isn't necessarily going to create new affordable units. And the mayor's office and the the departments over at the town had done a fabulous job with finding other ways to create affordable housing in Braintree. And so we've done a lot closer to the ten percent. But my view of what is happening with this bylaw is that it's essentially shutting down multifamily housing in a lot of areas in Braintree. And it's going to make it very difficult for people to come in with a proposal. And maybe that's what people will say at the public hearing that they want, and maybe that's what what isn't going to happen. But I do think that it's important that we really think about what this is and think about whether or not we want to be having the discussion now or we want to be having the discussion after the master plan. And I do think that there's value to having the discussion now in some respects because of the time that has gone by and the time that's going to continue to go by before that master plan can actually be bid out and created. But I think that that should be part of what we're looking at also. Um, I just wanted to look and see if I had anything else in my notes. And I think that is about it. So, thank you.
Member Crowha, thank you very much. Um, I know you've spent a lot of time and have a lot of expertise on the subject matter. And I think um your commentary is very helpful. Um, and I really appreciate your time and thought that went into what you just shared with us. Member McComme, do you have any comments or questions that you'd like to add?
First, I'd like to thank Member Crowa. I, I had a sneaking suspicion she might know a little bit more than we do. And it was really good to have her get together with everybody, um particularly the mayor's office. You know, i- she summed it up tremendously just looking at, you know, these are many of the questions that I had and thoughts. You know, for example, what are other cities and towns doing? Um, how are they setting the numbers? You you know, it seems like um Quincy having six hundred square feet per unit versus ours at five thousand, that which is, I think, separate from the inclusionary um aspect. That that's pretty eye opening. And um, I I guess uh without prolonging this, um, y- you know, it just seems to me that um we're so close to to the master plan and there was so much um information and disinformation that she mentioned several years ago. Um, and people wanted, you know, the master plan. Well, it's in front of us and this should certainly be part of it. I'm not, uh, I I I like many of the things that I see here, but I'm also very heartened by the fact that, you know, she mentioned the Fraser project where really good work was done. And I believe that the units are are really tremendous, according to the director. Hancock, we'll see what happens. I mean, we we had Windjammer come up. We've had Allen Street and, you know, the the staff and the mayor's office has has really done a good job in in doing many similar things related to um affordable housing. Um, and not to say that we shouldn't have it, have it be more mechanistic. But I guess m- my opinion at this point is, everybody wanted the master plan. It's coming. It just seems to me that this should be part of it. And I think that um based on our experience, I have confidence in the mayor and his team, the planning department and the planning board and the zoning board as well to handle things. I think we've done a pretty good job up until this point. Um, and until, you know, the master plan gets done, you know, you know, I I I I feel comfortable going along with it. I did, I did have one question for the director. So if we formalize a density bonus, does, is that a zoning board uh ruling? Or is that uh under, completely under the planning board?
Member McComme, that would be through the special permit. So um, that would not, uh, you wouldn't need both. Um, that would be something that would be done um contextually through a site planning exercise um through the special permit and substantiated with findings based on, you know, how, what the planning board, you know, why they found it was appropriate to exceed the density and then in the any particular location in which they, in which they do that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McComme. Uh, Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, just for clarity's sake, so is what we're looking at now an interim proposal? Or are we saying defer anything until the master plan is completed? And if so, how long, the master plan, I understand is underway, but when is that expected to be completed?
Uh, yeah, I think I have a similar question just with return, just with regard. So what we're looking at now is the potential to take what has been presented, this uh draft inclusionary bylaw and whether or not we want to sponsor it, which would basically be like opening up like a public process with like a proposal where we would discuss it, potentially modify it through that public process and then make like a recommendation of the bylaw to be put before town council. They would do a similar process um with ultimately the decision to adopt it to be made by the town council. We would just be participating in that, but the timing is is of interest to me as well. So if the planning board made a decision to sponsor or put forth this and start a public process, are there statutory uh timelines that we would be having to make decisions on? Like, um, like, how, I guess, would we be in a position where we would need to make a decision before the master plan was at a point? Or like how, like, once we decide to do this, or if we decide to do this, how long of a process is that? Is there a timeline we have to follow? Like, we have to make a decision within a certain amount of time, a certain recommendation and a certain amount of time? Or how does that work?
No, Madam Chair, the only requirement is we have a certain amount of time to open up the public hearing. Um, you know, it's, it's an interesting sort of, um, because I remember those comments as well as, you know, we shouldn't do anything until we do the master plan and and things are coming forward. And I guess I would, I would make a couple just short and simple questions, uh, excuse me, statements. Um, I I I think the planning board should support, should support uh sponsoring an inclusionary amendment. What, you know, this is the draft we have now. What, what, what will it look like after public hearings? Who, who's to, who's to to know what that's going to do? The other thing is, you pass an ordinance. If there's discussions that start brewing in in the master plan and there is discussions around housing, there's discussions around density or there's different things that the community starts talking about, they like, they don't like, okay, over here, not so much. Whatever those discussions might be, we can always change the ordinance. I just, I really think it's important. We're getting closer and closer. Member McComme mentioned some things. Member Crowa mentioned some things. Um, this department and the administration has been working very hard. We secured the funding um for the Windjammer conversion. So as we get closer and closer to ten percent, it's very important to make sure that we have something on the books. Um, and I I I don't think there's any harm in going forward with something and maybe changing it in a year or changing it in two years. Or maybe there is a recommendation uh in the um, as part of the master plan that says, we look at the inclusionary, we look at seven oh five. You know, we, we're not really in a position to do that now, but I don't think that it's wise to wait to have something um on the books going forward. Is is the ordinance perfect right now? No, it is not. Um, everything is open for um discussion or will be during a public hearing, um, open to revisions. Um, you know, there might be other people that have the same opinions. I just think that um, we really should get something on the books. Um, and if it needs to be changed, like I said, in a year or two years, there might be some more um people interested in doing um, something with other portions of the bylaw as a result of the master plan. Once we go through that public participation, um, we could pass an ordinance and it could be sort of tried on a particular project and we could have a different opinion. This doesn't work or this worked great. I mean, in until we put something out there and really test it in our waters here in Braintree, um, you know, you're really not sure how it's going to work. But there, in my opinion, there's no harm in having something um on the books. And understanding that seven oh five is very restrictive from a density standpoint, um, I would hope that people would target locations that are smart locations, that are locations uh in proximity to highways and to transit uh into our commercial uh and square areas that, you know, there could be the potential there for some kind of of density relief, given the context and given the project. So without having a project in a location to really say, this is how we would apply this in that particular location, I think Member Crowa did a good um example of kind of showing some of the projects and sort of how they panned out. Um, and, you know, we, as a community, should very, be very proud that anybody did anything, frankly. Um, you know, we don't have that requirement. Um, and the fact that we had people that were willing to do something um is 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 awesome, I think. So again, I would just put my hat out there, um, my my affordable housing hat um, and ask the planning board to to sponsor this and and have an opportunity for those hearings and have an opportunity. Who knows? The planning board could sponsor it and they could withdraw their own article. You you don't know what's going to happen. We could have vibrant discussion. We could have all kinds of awesome. We could have all kinds of awesome ideas and we could we could recraft something. We could have different testimony from different people from different variety of backgrounds. I mean, last time I I wanted to do an inclusionary housing, almost every developer in town showed up. I'm lucky I'm still here. So you, without having sort of that that opportunity to invite the public and to have that dialogue in the appropriate setting, I think, you know, we're cutting ourselves short. I would just, I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with a lot of Member Crowa's comments. But I do welcome the opportunity and think that having a hearing about this topic is something that would be, that is good for the town of Braintree.
Thank you, Director Santucci-Rozzi. Member Connolly, or Member Kent, did you have any follow up comments or questions after that?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
I do. Inclusive growth is important. It does allow for the creation of additional affordable housing and it allows the town to guide the development process. And I really do appreciate the residents that have demonstrated engagement on this. And I'd like to see the bylaw move forward now for wider consideration.
Great, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I make another comment?
Yes, please do.
Okay, you know, I I understand and I'm listening, but I and I don't know what the the priorities are for the master plan. But certainly, in light of some of the projects we've done and, you know, discussion here, it's raised a lot of more attention and more interest. What I what I'd like to do, again, I I just think everybody's, you know, waited and talked about the master plan. And I, my personal feeling is that we should wait. I don't know, again, if maybe one of the priorities in the master plan committee should be to take a look at this. I'm I'm happy to look at this in terms of a guideline. And if if the master plan comes up in a few months and says, hey, here's some of our ideas, I think that's one more great input. And I'd be I'd be more, I'd be, it'd be easier for us to sponsor it. I just think, you know, the plan has been around, people have talked about it. This should be part of it. So again, if 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 the group looks at it from a priority standpoint and has has some discussions, I think that would help us. So, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I think it's evident in the notes that we got prior to this meeting from town, from members of the town with encouragement of us to support or to to move into the next process on this bylaw means there's some interest. We definitely would love to stir up interest as we move into the master plan. We want people participating. We want people to share their ideas. I think as Director Santucci-Rozzi pointed out, you know, this is kind of a start, this bylaw that's in front of us. And if we do choose to move into a public process with it, we can vet it. And we don't have to, we don't have to move forward with it ultimately. You know, our recommendation will be whatever it ends up being based on how we get there, but it would offer would offer us the opportunity to hold a discussion with the public and to, I I mean, you know, I'd love to get some feedback from the development community. My concern is setting the wrong threshold number and not, and basically making it so that only forty Bs can come in because nobody can really get the monies to work out to just build it as part of what they're doing. You know, if we can't get someone to come in and make ten percent work on a twenty unit building, then their only option is forty B. So are we actually doing the opposite of what we want to accomplish if we don't set this right? But I think we need to move into the next phase of discussion. And if it just so happens that, you know, we move this, we move this on, we make the decision to to be the the entity putting it forth to hope, open up the discussion. And we have a lot of expertise on the board and experience on the board. You know, I think we're a good entity to start that process. But I do think that it needs to be tied into the master plan. It needs to be tied into a a community-wide discussion. I think people need to understand what we're talking about and how that impacts it. Some of the letters shared with the board in front of the meeting reference the bylaw as put forward by the zoning working group, as put forward by Council Sasha. As I I I want to know if everyone's reviewing the same document and looking at the same document. So once we move it into a public meeting, we can all say, this is the document before us. This is what it means and we can kind of pick through it and hopefully we'll get a lot of participation. I mean, it's really about the participation and people understanding understanding the bylaw and what it means better or worse. So I think it sounds like it is something that the director would encourage us to sponsor. I think I'm open to sponsor, personally speaking, I'm open to sponsoring it. I think we all share concerns about it aligning with the master plan. But I think either way, I don't think we, anybody wants to really see it dead in the water. We just want to make sure if we do this, we do it right. So I don't know, I'm I'm going to leave it up to you all to 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 decide what what we should do here. And but I think we've had a really good discussion and I I look forward to whatever direction this goes in. I will participate with in it some way. I'm very interested in in the in the success of the town of Braintree and its all the different aspects of what that is. So, you know, hopefully, I think we all agree that we want, you know, to see to see good development in Braintree and the right development for Braintree, and we want to hear people's inputs. So I think maybe we, you know, try to set up, set the stage up for that, so that moving into the master plan, like all this stuff is running at the same time. Yep, Director Santucci.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I really appreciate all the comments this evening. And just once again, going on the record, again, there's no harm in in sponsoring this. The planning board can sponsor this and advertise this. The planning board could have hearings, the planning board could revise the draft, the planning board could entertain comments from all variety of people, as noted by the chair. The planning board could also withdraw that if they feel as though if there is commentary related in the public hearing to let's wait, we're doing the master plan. Until we have that opportunity, I really think we're kind of cutting ourselves short. Dialogue and discussing something, in my opinion, the dialogue could be negative, but the general outcome is typically helpful, whether it's negative, positive. It is still helpful and it's still guiding from from the public input perspective and holding a public hearing. So I will just reiterate again that I I hope that the planning board does want to sponsor this and gives the community the opportunity to to go in the next phase and to discuss this. As noted by the chair, we'll be and we'll be having a lot of public participation for the master plan and around the master plan. And we we could have opportunities to put forward different questions related to this and related to affordable housing as part of that public dialogue. So, you know, the timing, it could be a bad time to some, for some people in their opinion. And it could also be a good time because there's going to be a lot of people that are engaged in the master planning process. So I would just, again, just go on the record, asking, asking the board members to just think really hard about whether or not you want to sponsor this and and hopefully you do. Thanks.
Um, just a quick question on timing. What would be the big picture, like timeline for this?
We would want to get it advertised as soon as possible. We'd like to try to shoot for January if we could. If we can't make January, February. But we would like to get the discussions going sooner rather than later. It could take, you know, a decent amount of time. We could receive a lot of comments. We could receive different ideas of things to look into. But we would want to get it going, you know, sooner rather than later.
Madam Chair, if I could, my only, you know, I'm I'm happy to listen to dialogue and ideas, you know, that's what we've always asked for. But when we ran meetings for the comprehensive zoning review, as you know, they took up several meetings, however long per meeting. And it was difficult to get any other business done. So if we're going to do this, you know, again, a thought, I don't want to shut anybody off, but let's let's have a time limit or something. Or, you know, a, you know, a meeting devoted to developers. I'd like to hear what the developers have to say. You know, just make it a little tighter so we don't run into the same concerns we did when we had the the last meetings. I mean, those things that just went on, right?
Yeah, and I think to the point where if we can get the the timing aligned better with the master plan, we may have some resources from our master planning team that has economic analysts, real estate experts. You know, I think they're already anticipating, this is an element that we've asked for them to incorporate into the master plan. So I would love to bring that expertise into the fold to possibly, you know, have that that explanation, that support that, like, you know, if if we don't know what kind, what we're going to get for public participation, but in the lack, in the absence of a lot of in a robust public participation, you kind of have to, you know, base your conversation on something. I think having another set of professional consultants with expertise in 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 our area of the world, like, that will help us with this as well. So I think trying to run them similarly, like, I'm almost thinking, like, if we could do this, start it up in February, so we have some time over the holidays, you know, it's not rushed to get people like, able to review the material and then kind of target, like, starting it up. Because that's going to be around the time master plan is, you know, hopefully looking to start holding public meetings in early spring, moving into summer. So if our process takes a couple of months, hopefully we can piggyback on that and it can be a true community discussion.
That's kind of what I was, that's kind of what I was saying, Madam Chair, that you know, because we're going, there's going to be a lot of different meetings and there's going to be a lot of people providing input that, you know, that that could work in our in our favor as far as trying to come up with the most appropriate language for the town of Braintree.
So we could look at potentially sponsoring something that would be on the agenda in February? Like, would we advertise and everything for it and then it'd be on like the February agenda or would we?
I would, I would default, I would default to the board. We, I'd have to look at the clock from when we, when the when it's transmitted from the so we file the amendment with the town council, not attorney, the council, the legislative body. And then that's transmitted back to us. We have to open up the hearing within sixty-five days. And then, you know, so depending on the timing, I'll default to the planning board. If they want to hear it in January, we can try to pull it together for January. If they think February is more appropriate, you know, I I would default to the board.
Okay, board, what do you think? Member Crowha, what do you think?
From my perspective, I think e- either one relatively fine. I mean, I do hear what you're saying with February, it's makes sense to line up a little closer with the master plan discussions that are going on. And considering if our next hearing is January eleventh, that's just coming out of New Year's when people are trying to get their January things up and going. So there is just a logistical benefit to doing it in February also from from having public participation and trying to make sure that people know about the hearing and come to the hearing when it's scheduled.
Okay, Member McCallum, what do you think?
I wouldn't start it until February. I would set a time limit. And I would have a plan. You know, like, Member Crow went through things very systematically. I think that that this is something, you know, that requires a systematic review. You know, do you like it? Don't you like it? You know, what what are, what are kind of the rules of the road, you know, the percentages? She, you know, she talked about other towns, that's very valuable information, other projects. So so and then, and then, you know, what are we, what are we trying to achieve here? What's what's the, what's the ultimate outcome? I think it comes down to the numbers, right? But what I would, for example, like to hear the developers, you know, and I'm sure Member Crow has other thoughts and stuff, but I I would have a plan. I I wouldn't, you know, when we did the comprehensive zoning, it was, it was a free for all. And it was no direction, there was no topics, there was just, you know, I like this and I don't like that. And it and it just, you know, as you know, we heard the same things, which is fine. But, you know, we should really, it ultimately comes down to the details, right? So those are my thoughts.
Yeah. Is the public notice, that's like a very standard scripted, like legal requirement, the way that reads? I think because we had some issues with this public notice and like this, like it was not a misunderstanding, but I want to make sure that people are like aware of what like is, I just want to make sure that it has like the right, like, attention and people are being engaged. And like, I just, I think sometimes the legalese gets kind of hard to do. So I just want to make sure, like, whatever we can do to help facilitate a good public discussion that is like, help, like, the comprehensive zoning, we read those meetings were very unproductive and it was very hard to like, and we want to be productive when we have this. So like, I don't know if there's anything we can do to like, set the stage as Member McCallum is suggesting. But maybe that, maybe we do have some time to do that, but if we, you know, between now and February, when we actually start the meeting, but I don't know.
Yeah, so if I may, through the chair, so the the public notice would be in the newspaper. This isn't something, we're not rezoning a piece of land, so there isn't like a butter notification per se. And then we would try to do as much outreach as possible, listening to the board. We could formulate a press release in conjunction with the mayor's office to really try to get people excited and engaged and try to have a very constructive hearing. You know, negativity in this particular scenario isn't going to be overly productive. And then we could try to target some specific groups. I would be willing to even host a session during the day and make myself available to anybody that wants to come and just ask questions, not necessarily a hearing. But, hey, what is this all about? How is this going to affect me? I know that there are some people in town that are uncomfortable speaking at public hearings, maybe meeting with some of the local developers. I'm willing to participate in anything that the planning board suggests that is going to provide input and collaboration amongst the different groups in the community that would be impacted or affected by this ordinance.
Great. Call me, Member Grove, do you have any, what what are your thoughts on on the board sponsoring this and timing?
As I concur with the last two members in terms of February date. Question I have, I know this can be a time-consuming process and you don't want to cut anybody off. Do we want to go to another meeting?
Hold like a special meeting?
A meeting dedicated strictly for this.
I mean, pot, I mean, is that something we could do? I mean, I assume it won't be a one meeting, but is that something we could do after the first meeting, just after we gauge? Like, I, we don't even know how time-consuming it's going to be until we hold that first meeting.
Exactly, exactly. I I think that having special meetings is always an opportunity. Not having a full understanding yet of what kind of meetings are going to take place relative to the master plan and those sessions. We could have opportunity even to like have a little table in the corner within for me. I mean, there's going to be I mean, there's gonna be a lot of different things that we can explore. Um, and I think any suggestions that encourage, um, opportunity outside of our regular meeting, you know, we can gauge the meetings. Right now, we only have one new application for January. There are some talks about some other applications coming in, but who knows? You know, so if we don't have a lot of hearings, then having it at a regular meeting is fine. I don't know if I'd put this on with five public hearings, cause then it's just not, not productive. We want people to be focused and not just waiting around all night to, to say something. So I think all of those are, are excellent suggestions. I, I think the board, what I'm hearing this evening is that there's a lot of interest and there's a lot of care around this. And I think the board just wants to be sensitive and approach it in the most responsible, uh, manner that they can. So, open to any kind of meetings extra during the day, come by, ask a question. Oh, you don't want to talk at the hearing? Okay, well, come to Fletcher Hall at ten o'clock on this day and I'll be there with a dot, dot board on. So, anything that, that the board suggests and it isn't gonna get me, uh, in trouble, I'm willing to do. I'm just having flashbacks of the last time, that's all.
Is there any, uh, data we could mine around what other towns are, where they are in the process and what they've done? Other than the, uh, Quincy situation, but, you know, places like, I don't know, Stoughton, Natick, you know, other, other towns around, uh, you know, the similar distance from downtown Boston that are, are in the process of dealing with this or have dealt with it, that we, we, I mean, we wouldn't want to get caught, you know. Well, I can't use that term anymore, but you're, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yep, yep. I actually have a bunch of samples and lists of communities that, and you'd be surprised, there's a lot of rural communities as well, as well, that have, um, uh, similar ordinance too. So, we can gather any kind of information, I'm taking some good notes here. You know, past practice, best examples, toolkits, all of those different things that are available to, to planners and boards.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have that session among ourselves perhaps before we open it up, to the, uh, you know, to, to public commentary. You know, if we had our, if we had our little kit that was pulled together, uh, and we could do our homework ahead of time, get a jump on it. So that would have some sense, be better prepared for what we might be, uh, dealing with when, when we open it up.
I can stop.
Having said that, February sounds about right to me.
Yeah, and I guess, I, I don't know if it's possible to have just a discussion point on the January meeting, where if there's any examples we could look at before that, we could have, you know, just a general conversation about what that February meeting could look like and what else is on the agenda. And, and, and how much pa- public participation is coming at that point to determine whether or not it makes sense to do it as one or to schedule or to open it on that night and then just continue it on to its own meeting if it seems like it's going to be a big crowd.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. Can we, can we keep it on the agenda?
Yeah, I'm writing it right down on the January agenda now.
It's on the January agenda for us to.
The same way it's on tonight.
And then we would move to sponsor it, set the time, set the date and like, maybe between now and then we can further kind of, fact gather and stuff, but we have the intent of doing that and setting that all up in February. Should we, I'm just wondering if we need to, like, set anything up now for February or if we should just?
Well, I, I, if the, if the board is, um, gonna vote to sponsor this, which I'm, I'm hoping they do, I would stop putting together the, you know, cleaning this up into a submission, they're gonna hand in this, like, titleless, you know, piece of paper. I'd, you know, put the, uh, Santucci touch on it and clean it up and, you know, put in the proper format and the format of a zoning amendments. And, um, we could, um, on the January meeting, we could say, oh, this was filed on this day. We're gonna advertise the hearing, we're gonna do this, and here's a whole bunch of other information to sort of, so the board has the opportunity to kind of, you know, review that information and, and then by the time we get to the hearing in February, there'll be a little more sort of knowledge and, and information, um, from the members as we, as we start to open up the hearing and start to take comments.
The public comment would start in February?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and then the version that the public would start reviewing, would that come post our January meeting? Or would that be now or when is, like, are people looking at that? Is the, I, I'm unclear if the commentary we're receiving is on this version or another version?
Um, I am not sure what, I think people just in general, I think, let me just look at the comments here. Some people sent me the zoning working group stuff. Some people say, take action on the inclusionary zoning, uh, put forth, uh, by Council Sasha. Other comments, just kind of, I think people were just pulling bits and pieces from Facebook and what have you. The board saw them, there's a whole variety.
There's a lot and there's a, I think, not misinformation, it's not, that's not the word I want. I just, I think we all need to be discussing the apple and we're still talking about different things. So I think, once we start the process, I just want to, like, gather comment and public participation on the actual document we're looking at. Cause some people might be thinking this is a prior, they're, they're supporting a previous version, but then it's not the one we're actually looking at. So they might not be in support of it. Like, I just, once we start that public process, whatever the document, the public's gonna be responding to, like, when that document is going to be made available to the public, at the January meeting or, like, after the January meeting or, like, now?
Does that have to be part of the advertisement?
Yeah, we don't, we don't put the full language in there, but this is not in, like, ordinance format yet, so.
Okay, so.
And then the other things about taking this out of the table. Think about how the one for the animal care looked like. It was, it was more, not professional, but different format. Cleaned up, it would be in that format, that would be the document that is filed with the council. I'd like to file it as soon as I can. If for some reason the board, I, I can circulate that to the board. Or we can have that for January eleventh.
Let's do that, let's have it cleaned up.
Like, ready to go though, cause I'm trying, hold on, I'm gonna look at the calendar here, let me, just give me a second. Let me see here, uh, one, two. Yeah, if, if the draft, if it was cleaned up and given to the planning board on the eleventh, I could file it with the com, the, um, town council on the twelfth. And then we could do the, uh, public notice and press releases and whatever else the board suggests to, to, um, spur engagement and, and discussion.
Okay, that, I mean, that seems agreeable, that personally, that seems agreeable to me. Uh, member Crowa?
Yes, me too.
Yeah, member McCallum, how does that generally sound?
That, that sounds good. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna add one more thought item. And that is that I think we should hear from every single town councillor about this.
I would love to see town councillors hold community meetings on this and that back to us, I think.
Absolutely. This is not on us like the last time. They, this, they need to be part of.
I think it just goes back to the public participation and the knowledge and the information sharing and just making sure people understand what we're doing, cause we want, we want everyone, we all want to be on the same page with it. So I think that, I think this sounds like a process, I think we're laying out what will hopefully be a successful process. I'm sure there will be lots of discussion, but that's what we want. So, um, yeah, I would agree with that. We, we would definitely love to encourage that.
We can also, to, um, uh, Madam Chair, our website is just growing and growing and growing by the days and we get more excited about different types of materials that we continue to populate. Um, I'm gonna need a web, web guy here soon or a web girl. But, um, we can also on, on our page, create a separate link and then we can populate different documents there. If we're sharing information with the board, whether it be a draft from another community, whether it be a list of every town that has inclusionary, whatever it might be, we can post all of those documents there. So, the public is seeing the same information that the board is, which oftentimes helps people sort of understand where the comments coming from, why are they saying this? Oh, well, they're saying this because they have this document here that was from so-and-so community and so, you know, whatever it might be. So, um, I, I would, um, I would really think that, that having all of that information available will be, will be better as well. That way people are, they're not just coming to the hearing and hearing it for the first time or seeing it for the first time. They have the opportunity to read it on their own, digest it, formulate questions, constructive criticism, straight out negativity and, or positivity, whatever it, whatever it might be. But giving people the information and giving people opportunity to digest that before the meeting, I think is, is going to be, um, very helpful in the public process.
Does anybody else from the board have any other comments they'd like to add? Member Connolly?
I agree that the, uh, representation from the town council is important and then that also distributes throughout the town and gives us a better perspective of what residents would, um, you know, be considering.
Great. All right, so do we have to make a motion or do anything? I feel like we're all kind of in consensus, but we could, you know, pull the board.
Madam Chair, there's a, there is a member, there is a comment in the chat. This isn't a public hearing, I'm not sure if you want to recognize that comment or not.
Oh, yep, that'd be, um, I, I think, you know what, I had read this earlier. Um, and I think that was to my point where we all need to be on the same page with the documents that are being reviewed and discussed. So, that is why we want to have a public process, we want the public process to be open and robust. And I hope that, um, we do get, you know, people showing up and engaging with us and having a discussion. Cause it is, if you write a letter, but then we're not sure which one we're looking at. We don't know if you're actually supporting what we're talking about or not, so we just, we just want to have that participation. So, I think in reading the responses, um, and having a little bit of background knowledge on where this inclusionary bylaw is coming from, I had heard that there were different thresholds being discussed as it's trickled down to us. And I did get the sense that, that some of those thresholds might be different. So I, I want us all to be discussing the same thing. So we do need to start a public process on that, that's open and robust. So, I did read that comment, um, and that's kind of how, that's kind of why my dialogue took on that, um, that aspect. Cause I, we do need to all be on the same page and we'll see where it goes. We'll start the discussion again. So excited to get into more zoning bylaw discussions, um, and work through it, so. Can't wait. So, it sounds like we would like to put this, yeah, um, challenge entertained a motion, I guess, to, um, keep this on the January agenda and target, um, moving it forward to public process, um, for February.
So move.
With a motion by member Kent, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by member McCallum, we'll do a roll call vote, member Crowa?
Yes.
Member McCallum?
Yes.
Member Kent?
Yes.
Member Grove?
Yes.
Member Connolly, I'm sure you would love to vote as well. Um, do you want to vote, um, just for the record?
Yes. And yes.
Your vote yes as well. I think we're all, uh, happy to move this along and see where it goes.
Okay, so it will be on the January agenda as a discussion item, just like it was today. I'll have that all cleaned up, ready to go, uh, and then we will proceed with the public hearing in February. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And we just have one other item on in, in-person meetings. I was at an in-person town council meeting the other day. It was, uh, very nice to see the process moving back in person. COVID is still there, probably will always be here, so I, you know, I do under, you know, we've always had kind of an open discussion about what this looks like. I think moving into the new year, it would be great to move back to in-person if we can do so safely. I know some of the other boards are, zoning board is, uh, Director Santucci-Razi, zoning board is meeting in person, correct?
Uh, the zoning board is, Madam Chair, yep.
Is conservation commissions in person? Have they, I guess, I've always, um, you know, hoped for kind of a general directive, um, on when we should do this. So I don't know if that's, you know, been put forward to us yet by the mayor's office. But I, I think it would be important to kind of move back, um, into in-person meetings in the new year. But also given that it's the winter and, um, I don't know how anybody else feels about that. But, um, I'm definitely open to, um, adjusting the, and from Zoom to in-person, um, over the next month or two. So I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts about that.
Yeah, I, I'm open to either as far as sort of our standard applications and the discussion with what tend to be the engineers and potentially one or two neighbors. But I, I do think it's important, if we're opening up a public hearing on the bylaw, to have that be in person. I think we're gonna get more engagement and more discussion from that standpoint. That's going to be easier to digest and, and really understand what people are saying. So for January, I kind of go either way, but I feel like for February, we should do that in person.
Okay, member McCallum, what do you think?
That's a good idea. Member, member Crowley's had a lot of good ideas tonight.
Director Santucci-Razi sneezing.
I'm sorry. Thought I was muted.
Just teasing you. Member Grove, what do you think about coming back?
Yep, February's fun.
Yeah, uh, member Kent, thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm double vaxxed and boosted, so, you know. I'm, I'm good to go.
All right.
February, whatever.
Okay, member Connolly, what do you think?
I would be open to a return in February. I did wonder, the other hearings that you attended or, um, you know, meetings, was there any guidance provided in the meeting? I've attended meetings, um, in other towns and they've provided like a health and safety. You know, that it's recommended that you wear a mask, things like that. I was wondering if the Braintree meetings have had anything like that.
I did not observe that, um, but I do think that that's, you know, I don't know. We could, we can talk about that, um, and hopefully, you know.
If I may through the chair, member Connolly, the room that we would be meeting in would be the auditorium. And the tables that the board sit, sits at, uh, can be arranged. So even the members are, are distanced, if, if that's what the members are comfortable with, um, in the audience. The room is very large, um, people could sit, you know, alternating seats if they're comfortable or not comfortable. And it's interesting, it's, it's, um, I'm on a board in my own community and we've been meeting in person for quite a while. And, um, nobody's coming, the only people that come to the meetings have been the, um, the applicants and, and their team and the engineers. We have had very few, um, abutters coming to the meetings. So whether or not they're comfortable coming or not, um, but if we did move to February, um, and the board wanted to have some type of, uh, you know, some masks or sanitizer or something. I mean, you can't force anybody, but, you know, I know I, I'm personally still wearing my masks in a lot of situations where I just don't feel comfortable. Um, and I'm double vaxxed and boosted as well. But, um, I, you know, I think different people have different opinions on that. But if they're, um, if you'd like me to check, uh, in with the Board of Health, if there's any, you know, practice recommended for hearings or anything like that, um, you know, we can, we can discuss that as well in, in, in January. So we'll, we'll have the in-person back on in January again. We talked about going, you know, for the public meeting. It's important because of the way we advertise the legal notice, um, for the meeting, so we do have to kind of nail that down. But we can revisit that in, in January and talk a little more if anybody has any ideas or wants to talk offline or is looking for some more, you know, um, you know, top-down, um, commentary or best practices or whatever. We can, we can do that. We just want to make sure everybody's comfortable. I think that's the most important part.
Do we have the ability to host, um, in-person and virtual?
At the same time? No.
Are there any communities that are able to do that? Are there any communities that are able to do that?
Mine does. Yeah, mine does.
I really do feel like that's important for us, even moving into the, into this discussion. Because in some ways, someone, you know, there's, there's pretty good access to the meeting when it's remote and if you're, you know, sick. Or you can't make it or you're nervous to be out in public, I would, kind of moving back in person is kind of a luxury maybe for some at this point in the pandemic. So I don't know if it's possible to have both, um, but I don't know.
Or potentially have it in person and then B-CAM has it and have a call-in period, maybe open it up.
Yeah, I, I'll have to talk to Sue Samino. I know she tried something and I, I don't wanna say it wasn't successful. Or it was, I just know that they're not doing that anymore, um. And I know that in my community, the only reason it works is something with the cable and whatever they do or don't do. Um, but it's, it's a little bit, um. Uh, it's, it's interesting how, how it goes down, that's all. It's, it's, I don't wanna, and then maybe a little awkward too. Uh, cause if you don't have the, you gotta have screens and you gotta have the people populated and. Or working off your computer and, you know, so I'm terrible at IT technology, so I don't. Don't rely on me to set anything up, but I can, I can inquire as to what uh Sue did or didn't do. And why it was successful or not successful, um, and then we can talk about it in January.
That would be great. It would be helpful to understand like more than just saying, no, we can't do it, why we can't do it.
Right, right, right. Yeah, they call it, they call it um hybrid, um, and it's, it's, it's. It's running both, um.
I think, yeah, I think just that's been a long, like that pops up all, all the time about, you know, access to. You know, viewing our meetings, seeing our meetings and, you know, I would be curious on that point, so, all right, um. I think that's the last thing this evening, so. Whoever would like to make the favorite motion, member Grove, jumping the gun there. Motion to adjourn made by member Grove, do we have a second?
Second.
Number Crowa's seconds, all right, roll call vote, member Crowa.
Yes.
Member McComme.
Yes.
Member Grove.
Yes.
Member Kent.
Yes.
Member Connolly.
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. Everyone, thank you so much. This discussion was so great today. Um, have a very happy holiday season and we'll see you all in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, everybody. Happy holidays, good night.